Oh, thank you.
Hope you're enjoying your time, huh?
I did.
Good. Go ahead and call workshop session or I'm sorry, councilor. Go ahead and call workshop session. Which bill? That doesn't say which. But there's none of T in there.
We might get some good tourism for Halloween if we can.
Ah, don't worry about it. Do you like to be?
Live Salem.
Do you need to wait?
Okay, yeah, two presentations for the workshop. First one should not take too long. It's Nika's PD report. And she's just kind of walking through what's been happening and some of the things she may be aware of, some of the things she may not be. She's not going to do it via PowerPoint. I think she's just going to go through the folder here and then give you an opportunity to shoot questions at her. Please, speaking. So, with that, please.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor and council, we just wanted to give you a mid-year report on economic development activities. Generally, in the past year, we've been giving you an end-of-the-year report. So, starting this year, we're going to try to do a mid-year report and then an end-of-the-year report at your retreat. So, this is a little late, about a month late. We've had it ready, it's just we haven't been able to schedule it on our workshop agenda. We normally would like to do that in August for the end of July report and then do one in February for the end of December and the mid-year report. So, I just wanted to briefly cover what's in here. Of course, the first is our new brochure, which is our marketing brochure, which has some what we call evergreen pages. So, these are the pages that are always included, which gives a little flavor about what Lewisville is all about. The middle page that you pull up, it has all of our plans that we're kind of working on and our tagline, and obviously it has their aspirations. We make our bill plans a reality. The which bill or who will campaign that's been going on for the past two years is basically, some of you are familiar with it. It's what we call the who will man, which is scratching his head, asking which city, which bill do I select to go in? Everybody says the same thing. Everybody says we have this, we have that. Who do I go into? And so, we're basically saying that, you know, our bill is special. This is the bill you need to select. So, that's been going on for the past two years, and we've been using that in a lot of our advertising. The activity report that we've provided you is primarily a highlight, so this is not inclusive of everything that's been going on, but primarily the major activities. So, starting on page 20, we've given you basically state of the market, so we're comparing where we are in terms of other neighboring cities and how the market is performing overall. So, in terms of citywide retail, we're actually fair, fairly well. Our vacancy rates are not very high compared to some other cities that have higher vacancy rates. We do have older shopping centers. We also do have a larger area of retail compared to the population and total area of the city. So, Plano and us are actually the highest retail, having the highest area or square footage of retail in the area. And combined with our retail, that's fairly on the older side. That creates a challenge, however, as you can see, we are not like, for instance, Cappell has higher vacancy rate than we do. On the...
Square footage?
As you can see, compared to the again areas, Plano has the highest square footage of retail, and we're next after Plano. And then, you know, again, some shopping center activities and what we've had, we have compared to the age of shopping centers, number of centers that we have in the area, and then vacancy rate for the shopping centers.
Has, I'm sorry, has Cappell, you said ask you questions?
Yes.
Has Cappell been high like that, or is this just recently?
No, it's been high, it's been high since the past two years.
The past two years.
It's supposed to be about the same thing, maybe the same. You have to take care of your order. It's been really hard since. Perfect. Same. Make it for a long time, unfortunately, the whole city.
Kellerton actually has done a fairly good job in terms of occupying their old retail center, redeveloping some of their older retail. So, we are looking at some of their programs, what they're implementing. We look really good on the industrial and office side. We have one of the lowest rates in the area, actually, in the Dallas metro area. Actually, we hardly have anything to fill at this point. So, we are looking for to build new buildings, and that's always good news. One of the things we don't have in the industrial market is the number of very, very large boxes. So, we have a lot of what we call medium-sized boxes, which is somewhere between 100,000 to 400,000 square feet, with a million square foot boxes, 800 to a million square foot is, we don't have that many of them. And so, that's an area that we like to kind of start looking to see if we can develop more of the larger boxes. New retail operations, I know council is always interested to know when new retail has come in. So, some of the major ones, of course, are the larger ones that we've had this year, are the new Hobby Lobby. It's back in Lewisville, so that's always the news.
Where exactly is it? Over by Target?
It's over by the old.
Old Target, yeah.
Not the new Target. So, if you remember, the old Target was across the street from Biscuit Mall, where...
So, I was trying to find it. Is it next to, it's going to be, there's a half price, half, half off, half price?
Right next to it.
It's right next to it?
Right next to it.
Oh, they didn't have it signed up.
I hope it's this Friday, then.
Yeah, but their sign is up, so.
Okay.
There. And then Brooks Athlet is a new retailer for us, similar to TJ Maxx or Stein Mart, actually, very similar to that. And then, of course, Gander Mountain, that's in the targets, the existing target center. We've also had some fairly large corporate relocations and expansion, and again, very proud of that. So, I don't want to go through all the lists, but you have, you have the list in front of you. Prime Controls is one that you guys have put in agreement. Last council meeting, Stern Lending is another one. Ericsson has a large presence here now, so it's a good list, very good list. We have major projects, some major projects under construction that we're highlighting for you. So, Majestic Building Number Five, for instance, is a new construction for over a million square feet of warehouse space that's going to start construction. IDI, industrial building, again, in the same area in the south of Lewisville, and that's about a little over half a million square feet.
IDI is in construction, Majestic's not?
Majestic is not. Majestic has been approved for construction, so we have approved their permit and everything that's ready to move.
IDI's a monster.
3500,000 square feet.
That gives an idea of the size of these buildings, basically. Of course, on the retail side, we have two major renovations. One just has started on Lewisville West, and then, of course, one that will be going under construction hopefully fairly soon is Old Orange Ace, which is Walco Foods. We also have very good single-family residential activity, which is really good for us in terms of infill development and getting some new blood into our single-family development, in addition to also doing some renovations to our old single-family. The new single-family has a huge impact on the economic growth of the city. And then, of course, multifamily residential, we've been having a huge activity on the multifamily side as well. New construction for Quest Manor, new construction at Hebron 121 Station, and then Broadstone at Round Grove, all new multifamily construction. In Old Town, we've had some activity. We're really looking at activity to pick up with the construction of the Plaza, the Plaza being under construction, and the Main Mill Street plan going under construction soon. We are getting ready to bring that professional services agreement to you in the next month or so to start the design on the main mill. Uptown Village has started with some permitting activity, so the buildings will be going up. And then, we've approved, as you know, a couple incentives within the, within Old Town, and then there's several projects we do in Old Town. We are working on Old Town Development Ordinance to kind of overhaul it and make it more friendly, at the same time, enhance the development regulations in Old Town.
Your Old Town incentives, Old Town flying pigs submitted concept to install open...
Patio.
Open what?
Patio.
Patio, okay.
Or Mrs. Patio, please.
I was filling that in with all sorts of things, patio wasn't one of them.
Sorry. I didn't catch it. So, we're usually like team reviews. And then, of course, on the planning side, other than day-to-day activities that we have, we're working on some long-range plans, which are, of course, you know, top of our agenda, Zoes in 2025, and then the retail analysis and recruitment plan that Catalyst is working on, and we're pretty much finishing that plan, and we'll be bringing that back to you. List of brownfields redevelopment that we've done in the last six months, although we have a report of the wrap-up of that program for the past three years. It's been a very successful program. We've done a lot of projects. It's made an impact on some fairly large development. We have a good inventory now about what's out there. Today, we were asked, was there a filling station in place of this retail store? And we found out through that inventory that in 1937, there was a filling station. So, it's proven to be a really useful grant, and we've put it to really good use. We've also funded some interns through that program that have worked on the project, and we funded some technology. So, it's been a really good program for us. We're working on some changes to the zoning ordinance, again, as we talked about at the retreat, the zoning ordinance needs a huge overhaul, it just needs to be completely done, but we think there's some areas that we can improve in the meantime, so we're always looking for those improvements. Wind energy ordinance, we are ready to bring a work session kind of going over the proposal to you in the next, whenever Mr. King is ready, I can relate to that. So, we haven't, I have to say, he hasn't seen our presentation yet, but it's, I've reviewed it three times, and it's, I think, you know, we have a very good presentation to go. Hopefully, in the next month, in October or so, we'll be able to bring that to you. And then, of course, based on your recommendations and comments, we can put it into an ordinance. And then, of course, general development ordinance, committee of development and planning division are working very hard on that, again, to make enhancements to the general development ordinance. Those ordinances can always use changes and enhancements as development. We have a corporate highlight for you, so these are some of our larger names in Lewisville, again, a very good list that we all should be proud of. Also, we have given you activities for Old Town Design Review Committee. As you can see, primarily, most of the activities have been related to signs in Old Town. These responses is something I wanted to kind of highlight a little, because these are the responses we have sent back to these companies. As you can see, many of these have code names, because we are under a confidentiality agreement. So, we compete on this list that you see that we have done in the past six months. We have sent information about Lewisville on these projects, and you can see that they are fairly large, major projects. We compete not only in the state of Texas, not only in this region, but most of the time with other states. So, we compete nationwide on these, on these projects. If we are shortlisted for even one in a year, we've done really well. In the past year, we've been shortlisted for three, and three have pretty much chosen Lewisville to be the one. Some of them, again, are still in the work, which we call our current negotiations, so we, you know, we cannot reveal who they are, but we can tell you. I tell you, I have to care. Anyway, we have commercial developments, we have certificate of arguments, it's just been issued by the community development department. Again, as you can see, it's a pretty good list. These are the highlights. Just very quickly, we also do some outreach and marketing, like this year, we were in the Real Estate Guide of Texas, and so we put in a little, so these two pages came in at the same time, so side by side. We also like to do, to do these ads in conjunction with other large development groups that do these ads in the city. For instance, Sprite Development and Castle Hills do a lot of ads in these magazines, and so we try to be back-to-back with them, so people see Castle Hills, they also see other information about Lewisville. And so, this just came up last month in the Real Estate Guide, which basically highlights who we are, what we're all about, and what we're trying to do. Happy to answer any questions? Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, that we created this brochure, so it could be a handout for a lot of, for many, many projects. So, not only for us to take it with us to conferences, trade shows, not only to hand it out to new development that comes in, but also to even small businesses like in Old Town. So, we can, we can provide information to be used for sure, based on, we can tailor it based on any project that comes in. So, we've provided some, for instance, some of the flyer, some of the information that we put in here, for instance, if a project came in for Old. So, it's contained to be used for various purposes.
You know, going back to your first couple pages about the vacancies and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
It's interesting, you know, in the past, we'd look at what causes the age of our shopping centers, but when you look at this, the age really doesn't have any correlation to occupancy.
Very observant, my head. Very true, yes, we noticed that too, that in terms of, the only thing that matters, though, is that the type of occupancy that you have in those older retail sections. So, if you upgrade it, you get a higher grade of retail, for lack of better word. But in terms of occupancy, they could keep it occupied with having a little lower rates. That's the difference. But yes, you are correct, because there seems to be no correlation between high vacancy and old shopping centers.
Did we do anything, is there any study on sales for those occupancy rating compared to occupancy rate? You don't say like a average?
I see what you're saying, but no, we didn't.
Sales though, for occupancy rate?
Not that much.
I don't know how you'd be able to get that or not.
We'll look to see if that information is accessible.
Will be interesting to see.
Because, yeah, sales is normally...
What's the profitability of, because when I look at the data that we have, you can see why a property owner wouldn't be incentivized to upgrade.
Because it's full.
Yeah.
All right.
Unless he can command a higher rate, figure out how to make that work.
Other thing I was supposed to, just, I'm trying to stay ahead, like, we're very heavy-weighted on mortgage companies.
Yes.
Very heavy, and I don't know if you've noticed, but companies are struggling to lay off again, and people are struggling to lay off again in the mortgage.
I think, oh.
Bank mergers now, so they're laying off 2,500, somebody else did 1,500, and it's all Wells Fargo's getting ready to lay, people all, I haven't heard anything about Chase yet, but.
Tech to, yeah, Cisco just laid off 5,000.
Well, we're not a heavyweight to have, because we are mortgage companies.
We are, yeah, we're becoming like, especially that 121 is becoming like it. We have quite a few, quite a few. I think our labor pool is really good for those call centers, and of course, our proximity, again, to reach that labor pool is really good.
You were asked what happened to Richardson, I can attest.
Telecom portal.
Telecom portal, when it blew up, well, that thing just died over there, and they had to bank it down there. Of course, it's come back now, but how many years did it take to come back? 20 years? And I guess, maybe when we start looking and trying to do incentives, incentivize things in that area, if we start doing more leaning towards other entities other than mortgage companies right now, simply because we're so overweight, you know, kind of like we did years ago when councilmen now, the members suggested, trying to quit being so overly dependent on sales tax, and to get that down some, so that we've had a downturn, which it did happen, and what these affected.
Absolutely, we can definitely look at that. One of the things that I like to look at is, especially now with having such a low vacancy in Lewisville, is start looking at our incentive based on new construction, bringing new listing value versus doing it for modifying existing buildings. So, a lot of these, these call centers like going to what we call plug-and-play levels. I think some of the ones that are consolidating, some of these lenders that are consolidating, and some that have not been instead of Texas, such as Stern, is a very good example, they like our area primarily, again, because of proximity, because of our location, what we call, so, but that's quite well taken, I think that's...
Did they ask you anything else?
No, thank you for the update. I like the idea of every six months, I really do.
Okay, I'll show my, I'm going to let you know every square foot of Lewisville, but the folder here, where is that right there?
Just down the side.
Down the middle on the east.
Oh! I'm a TJ. Okay, I like it. And then, I looked down there too many, I thought, well, that's a fireplace, but it's not, I guess, water coming out of it, so it's not a fireplace.
Market there as well, two markets together with it.
Like, where is that?
Coffee gang.
I thought at first maybe it was that area over there that's by 121, where a burger place, but...
Off the bypass.
Yeah, where that burger place is up there, back in there.
That's Turkey.
Yeah, period back there, best of it.
Okay, our next presentation, you ready to move on? Is the one from Perkins Engineering on the odor abate material. Would you go ahead and introduce the folks here that will do the presentation for you?
Mayor and council, if you know, we had done some work internally to see what we could do about our odor issues, and we had actually done a little small study with Green Park Mental, and RJN, who does our I and I work, we asked them to take a look at it, but we quickly realized that we really needed an in-depth study by some, an organization that does this primarily as their place work. And so, we selected Perkins Engineering, and I think you'll see what she goes through, that there's, they've done work for several cities, and that's how we selected them. So, Perkins Engineering is the one that did our study, and this is Mark Perkins from Perkins Engineering.
Good to have you.
And Charlotte Smith, that was the primary engineer that worked on this, and they're going to go through their presentation, and if you have questions, just have them explain. Some of it's pretty technical, but I think you'll be able to understand. You've seen a little bit of the background from what was in your packet last week, so...
We're probably going to go through this out front too, because I've been told now, I've been getting phone calls again today, it's been in the media, I guess, it's been on the news stations and everything.
It's on the radio this morning, dude, something, and said that there was a...
So, I'm going to want you all to, it can be redundant by a lot, but out in public to out in front too, so the public can see that we are trying to address the issue.
Yeah, of course, this is the study that generated the capital project that's budgeted for me.
And mayor and council, this particular PowerPoint that we distributed last week was one of the staffs, new staff put together, kind of, new presentations that were put together by Perkins, so just kind of this is our idea, there is some information on the back of what studies were, typing those kind of things, but this is the presentation, so don't get confused with the student, we're working from this.
And I do want to say, I appreciate both of you coming tonight and taking the time to do this, and for your benefit, we've got you way down on the agenda, we'll move you up, because I know you're here tonight, and I don't want you to sit here all night long, so we'll move you up before you be right after the public period, whatever public period.
Thank you.
Thank you for a real brief introduction. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. As you also said, a big part of our business is odor and pollution for old municipal plants, and you guys are in a situation like a lot of other cities around here, where your wastewater plant wasn't necessarily in a problematic area when it was built, but, you know, growth occurs, people, it's always saying if you build it, they will come, that happens, and I wish I could sugarcoat the topic, we're talking about sewage odor, but more specifically, some solutions for it, and I think it's Charlotte's mind, you have some objective and scientific bases behind, you know, that go behind the recommendations that come in, and hopefully we can come up with a solution that makes sense for you. We've got to turn it over to Charlotte, she's our project manager on this job, she's got a chemical engineering degree from Rice and masters in environmental engineering, she does our odor dispersion modeling, which predicts intensity and frequency, how far out odors go from certain sources, and she'll talk to you something about that. Let's go to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Mark, this is a condensed version of our presentation on our sampling, modeling, preliminary design project, to kind of kick off the design project, which will start next month. We did a two-day sampling survey, this is just a summary of the highlights of the results. The inflow tower and the grid units, that's where we're going to concentrate on, as you can see, they're highlighted in the orange, and that's, it was really a no-brainer, I think you'd get every consultant firm to tell you the same thing, that's where the majority of your odors are coming from. The first column is your H2S concentration, you can see how much higher that is for those headworks units than your other units. There's other constituents that smell that H2S is a good indicator. We actually hung odor logs in about 10 locations, there are these, I should have brought one with me, there's a, y'all actually have two, they're just yellow things you can hang in very harsh environments, and we'll measure the H2S. The Prairie Creek pump station, your flow from Old Town flows into Prairie Creek first before it goes to the inflow tower, so that was a great indication of kind of showing that, really, we're not getting a lot of odors from Old Town. The H2S levels were really low, average of only two, it's not all that unpleasant at your Prairie Creek flow station, and it primarily handles flows from Old Town. We actually hung those same instruments up at the inflow tower, and there we got an average almost of 100, and that handles flows from Old Town and from the Timber Creek interceptor system, which handles about 60% of your flow. So, the odors are coming from the Timber Creek area, the Timber Creek interceptor system, not from Old Town. It's in vogue to measure odor units, it's quite an expensive test, because you have to send bags off to a group of four citizens who will sniff your bags until they determine that what...
How is that in vogue?
Well, it's an expensive test, so we like to minimize it, but we did run it for you guys as well.
People get paid to do this. Obviously, well.
What's their lifespan?
At an odor unit of one, only half the population can just barely detect the odor, but at an odor unit of seven, that's when, that's when it's considered a nuisance, that's when it's going to be a problem. So, that's what I graphed here. The, this is our dispersion model output, we've done this for numerous wastewater treatment plants. The red is how, the current odor situation, the current emissions coming from all the odor's treatment facilities that we measured. And then, you can see the, the orange is if we control the inflow tower only, the yellow is if we only control the aerated grid, and then the green is if we control both the inflow tower and the aerated grid. And it's important to understand that this is not absolute, that it's more of a useful tool to determine the relative impacts of different odor control scenarios. But we were a bit surprised that Old Town is experiencing odors from the wastewater plant before we got to digging, because it is a mile away, but we think that we'd be able to control odors in Old Town from the wastewater plant by controlling the headworks. Our dispersion modeling includes that experience as well.
Point out, just to make sure this isn't interpreted the wrong way, that those outer lines indicate, is it one 15-minute event per year in an average atmospheric year? So, it's, it's not all day, every day that you smell it out that far, it's, it's one event, and then for one event at a slightly lower intensity that would come in, so this shouldn't be interpreted as you smell that all day, every day out there, those, it's a very infrequent occurrence.
So, this graph that we're looking at here, you take a look at the atmospheric conditions over a year, and then that's how you determine, based on topology and atmospheric conditions? Or did you sit around for a year with people smelling the area?
We have sat around for a year for other clients and tried to calibrate them all, and it did surprisingly work out well. But, you know, this is an EPA model called AirMod, and we use a user interface put out by Lakes Environmental, and they take in topology, meteorological data, and then the emissions that we measure from the basins themselves, are the three inputs. The first step in controlling odors is you have to batten down the hatches. The aerated grids are currently wide open at the top and there's quite a few holes at the inflow tower where the drum screens are, so we're gonna wanna seal down all those hatches and make an airtight system where we can pull a vacuum. And once we get it airtight, we're gonna, well, in concurrence when we get it airtight, we're going to correct, protect all of the concrete and surfaces that would be susceptible to corrosion, because if we left them unprotected and battened down the hatches, they would corrode quite quickly. So a lot of the cost that you'll see is, our good portion is, is concrete corrosion protection is about forty dollars a square foot and then the cost for the covers and then the cost for the foul air duct to bring the foul air from the existing units, the odor control system.
Often, does that have to be re-coated, a correction?
Ten years. Maybe longer.
Yeah, the law depends on the quality of the coating, there are some very high-quality coatings that cost a whole lot per square foot that could last, could be longer than possibly up to twenty years or more. There are some lower quality coatings that add traction to the price, they have to replace every five years, so there's kind of an economic decision to make there.
Initially, they've been, the OPCC that is in your packet includes the higher quality coatings that I've warranted for a long period of time, so and then you can inspect them and they'll last a lot longer than they're warranted presumably.
I'm assuming over the long run, that's more economical because of the cost to re-apply?
Yes. And also to take a basin down to re-coat it isn't an easy catch. We do have some redundancy at your treatment plant with the two basins, but if there were some kind of storm event when they were trying to go through the basins, it would be quite a headache for. Once we batten down the hatches of the headworks, we will take the foul air and this foul air duct, something similar shown off to this side of the picture and route it to a bioscrubber that will only need a one bioscrubber system, one tower system here because the airflow is low enough to fit into one tower. And these bioscrubbers have an inorganic media that lasts ten years and they work quite quickly, they only typically have a resonance time within the packed bed media of about twenty seconds and they also work quite well at removing hydrogen sulfide. We require for specification that they're ninety-nine percent plus and all the manufacturers were familiar with at least seven or eight of them buy into that. And there will be some odors that come out of the stacks, some reduced sulfides and some more difficult to treat compounds, but we didn't measure a lot of those in the foul air, they're not expected quite a bit in the headworks, so we took that into account with our D to T, our dilution to threshold odor modeling. So we expect the bioscrubber to be a great fit to this odor product.
I need to jump ahead, I'm doing that, but what are the waste products of this and how's that disposed?
The waste products would be a lead shade stream, we would be alive compared to the in, a wastewater treatment plant's a great place to, to create it because I don't think the wastewater plant will even notice it coming into their, coming into the raw water.
Very small, this stream drains all probably in about a two to four inch pipe, it's new ten to fifteen gallons a minute, so it's very low pH, but it's, it's low quantity.
But you are using plant water, you're not using city domestic water, so it's recycled reused water within the plant.
We like to get the nutrients from the plant water actually, it helps feed the bugs in the bioscubber. We will have to make sure everywhere that waste stream goes is protected from corrosion because it would, it would eat a conductile iron pipe pretty fast, but as long as it's all PVC, we'll be fine. As part of the odor control project, we were looking at the older technology of the aerated grid basins. They were constructed in the eighties and that was a, a technology used by many, many other wastewater treatment plants back then, but vortex grid removal is gonna be a superior grid removal technology for you and we can convert the aerated grid basins relatively easy by just putting in the mechanics of the vortex grid removal equipment within the existing aeration basins, kind of staged construction schedule, so we'll just take down one at a time. There is a capital cost, but there will be a little bit of payback because vortex grid technology requires a lot less horsepower than the aerated grid basins. And then the biggest plus to this project is we won't be taking a, a large amount of air, blowing it through odorous wastewater and releasing that to the atmosphere. So we'll be able to cut down the size of our bioscrubber because we wanted to treat the foul air from the aerated grid basins.
Steve, does that help any with the thought of, we talked about moving eventually to an anaerobic system, does that help or have any impact on that?
On the sludge itself?
Yeah.
Now, we checked it today, it's highly costly, we still get the foul odors from the anaerobic system as well.
The anaerobic for treating the sludge or for?
Sludge, especially for the sludge process.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I would, I would do that because your sludge process is awful close to the new valley, valley ridge road coming through.
A lot more odors back in with the anaerobic sludge process.
If this grid process, if you ever do go that direction, could have a slight benefit because it'll help remove grit, which is basically sand, pebbles, larger objects, keep that out of the process and make the biological process more efficient downstream.
What we're talking about here is mainly at the headworks of the plant before it's gonna be any sludge activity or activated sludge process, it's mainly for removing sand, grit, any of the products that the fine screen won't enable until they leave. So it's basically cleaning up your wastewater before you get into the activated sludge process itself.
There a cap that's put on the top of those?
Yes, we put a flat cover on the top to treat the foul air from underneath. There won't be a lot of foul air treated since the water's just, it wasn't thrown in a vortex motion, but we'll just pull this like that all.
Currently, it's in the open, there's a grid removal chamber about six feet in the process and the rest of it's just aerated primary waste and that's what's fitting, that's what they're gonna seal with that. These, these two units will go in those two chambers.
Yeah, I'm recalling my tour pretty vividly at this point.
You'll like the one you take after this is much better.
Oh, I love the plant, it's, it's a great resource.
We are about getting to remove some forty horsepower blowers, so that's an electrical savings, I don't know how much it'll actually offset, but that, that's a huge cost.
They've reached the end of their useful life, we're not getting rid of anything Back to the fine screens or the inflow tower, currently screenings from each of the five, five screens shown in blue are just discharged into dumpsters underneath each screen and it's a big fly attraction, fly attractant and since the screenings are wet and still full of organics and whatnot, they just give off some odors, but what we're gonna do is trap that all in a conveyor and convey it down to the washer compactor, two of whom are redundant, one on each side, which is the equipment, an example of the equipment I show below. And then that will wash and clean up the screenings and reduce the screen's volume because it'll take out the water and dump it into a dumpster and that'll be a lot less odorous and a lot less, it won't attract vectors because it'll be cleaned and washed.
Trips, but it's done by weight, so are we removing down?
Probably, probably fifty to seventy percent of the screening is water, so you're, you're basically removing that compact and in some way reducing that water content. So then all you have is the organic or the inorganic material that you collect.
Your current contract with Waste Management doesn't charge for screenings, Hollings? So we couldn't put a cost savings there, but I did assume some numbers and maybe, I think it was about twenty thousand dollars a year in savings if you paid even a very low rate for screenings, Hollings, which is quite happening in the future, I don't think we'll be getting such a deal from Waste Management. But maybe you will now that you put in a washer compactor, because they're gonna have to take a lot, they're gonna get to take a lot less trips, so it'll be a lot nicer.
We'll actually reduce the number of roll-offs that are there.
Yes. Clean up the area. As part of the study, we looked at all anticipated odorous treatment processes at the wastewater facility, but the headworks were the majority of them, some other alternatives were the Prairie Creek pump station, the trickling filters, the aerated digester and the dewatering building, but those did not have enough emissions to warrant inclusion in our project. Switching that aerated digester to a, to an anaerobic digester kind of leads me into that table, you might would need to, if you did do that, you'd probably need to include odor control in the dewatering building and we did put together some numbers, if the processes did change to where the dewatering building caused enough emissions to be an off-site source, it'd be about one point seven million dollars to control that, control the odors from that. But at this time, I mean, the dewatering building's fine, I'd have lunch in there, wouldn't recommend spending any money there. If we throw in an anaerobic treatment process or primary purification or something like that, you'll have problems with your dewatering building with odors. This is just a, an overview of the improvements we identified. You can see the inflow tower and the aerated grid, very nice of vortex grid, it's a great project in that everything's pretty compactly in the northwest corner of the treatment facility. Contractor should have no problems with getting this done with eleven months to substantial completion and twelve months to final completion. Here's a summary of the opinion of probable construction costs, the bioscrubber and the associated foul air duct work to bring the foul air from the, from vortex grid and the inflow tower are the bulk of the cost. The vortex grid removal units, that'll be two of them, that's primarily an equipment cost from the vortex grid manufacturers as well as the washer compactors and conveyors. A lot of that is equipment costs rather than, there won't be a whole lot of concrete work on this job. And the typical multipliers for an initial OPCC reaching the two-point, three-eight number. The next four slides are just some slides to get you comfortable with our experience and we have done two slides worth, had a minimum of recent odor control assignments. I could give you all contact information if you know, if there's any of these specific clients that you'd like to give a call and then also our design projects with the associated construction costs in the last call. The project team primarily consists of Mark, myself and then Luke Karowski, he's not here today, he's our graduate engineer in the office. James McMillan will be a part of our QCT, he's, Mark and James have both served on the Odor and Corrosion Committee for the Water Environment Federation on the national level, so had the QCT as well with James McMillan, should put his picture on here, he's not as pretty as we are.
I like, I like a pea for the sausage.
The Dallas project that y'all did, is that the, the plant south of the city, is that what we're talking about? On the forty-five a little bit, south of the city, yes. When was that? Well, the, actually, you know, two projects there, one is under construction now, the one that's listed there is still under construction, it hasn't started up in, a previous employer about eighteen years ago did another large odor control system there for lift station and your communal areas. That, that plant is a, is an enormous plant, it needs, it still needs some work, it's got a ways to go.
So for both of you remaining here, am I understanding that correctly, that it would be counterproductive to an anaerobic system later? Is that my thing?
I'd have to look at the details of why you'd wanna go with the anaerobic digestion, but if, be sure to put in odor control in the dewatering building, the capital cost when you're doing the cost analysis, because the payback has to include odor control, otherwise it's not a fair evaluation of anaerobic digestion. Anaerobic digestion you save on the air of your blowers, but you, you'd have to control, include odor control.
That was a system I saw in Phoenix, is why I questioned that.
Yes, it's advantage, it does reduce sludge quantity, it has some advantages on operational costs, but just wanna make sure you don't overlook the odor production potential when you, when you do it.
We're, we're mixed power, they're anaerobic digesters, but they're a lot bigger, it's a pretty complex system. Dallas South Side is gonna contract with an outside firm to, to generate power from their anaerobic digesters, but I, I don't know that y'all would have the sludge quantity to, to make that happen.
We actually looked at that before and that, you know, it'd be a while before we would have a quantity as well to switch from anaerobic to anaerobic, it would be very expensive.
You might wanna describe the basic differences between the two. Late persons had a little bit better understanding of what's involved.
The treatment processes, you have aerated, aerated basins where you treat your wastewater and then you send that aerated wastewater, we call it mixed liquor on clarifiers, and there the stuff that floats off the top is relatively cleaner water and that goes on to filters and the stuff out the bottom, that's your sludge. And then the stuff out of the bottom of this clarifier, so sludge will go to a digester or sometimes it goes straight to a belt press and straight on to a landfill, but in the else case, we do route it to a digester. And for the aerated digester, again, you have to use more air to keep it anaerobic and to further treat it and remove some of the BOD. But you guys could actually just decommission your digesters altogether, because you go, you take the sludge straight to a landfill. Digestion does reduce sludge quantity, so I, I guess I, before I say that, I should look at how much your power is costing you versus your hauling costs and disposal costs. I mean, it's different for every city depending on those, primarily those factors. But in an anaerobic digester, they work, they do work better. You would, you would take your sludge over to an enclosed system and just recirculate it and it would give off a methane gas and hydrogen sulfide and all kinds of other nasties.
And you could run through the power. Yeah, yeah, methane is pure methane.
Or some people would just flare that methane because it's, it's not a clean gas, so it's, it's not easy to, to convert to energy because there's so many contaminants in it. And that reduces the sludge quantity as well, but once you hit that anaerobic sludge on to your belt press, that's gonna release some odors in that belt press building and right now, there's no corrosion in the belt press building, it's, it's relatively a pleasant place for the dewatering building, but if there's anaerobic sludge going to it, it's gonna, it's gonna need some corrosion measures taken, some ventilation and probably odor control.
And your, your company doesn't do the actual work itself, you do the design, the basic of the project and stuff and then, I guess you have several, probably not a lot of companies that do the actual work with what y'all design?
Like design build firms?
Well, no, I mean, just, are there a lot of contractors that do this work that you're going to design?
Oh, yes, yes. Archer Western, the, they, they all been on our project, Archer Western, Greg on, I guess they're, they're familiar with our name, just like our kids and the others and they would. others, and they would.
So there are a number of them that'd be able to.
Yeah.
This size project, I'd be surprised if you wouldn't get the best of it. It's a construction contractor. It's a size a lot of can do.
And then do you oversee the project that is being done?
We would have monthly construction meetings and come out as needed for any big equipment startups or, or things like that. But we would definitely have a scheduled monthly construction meeting with an associated site busy. It would be available for, the submittals from the equipment manufacturers and from their contractor would come to us, and we would review them and then send our back our comments to the contractor for his inclusion.
Okay. Do you have any questions on them, actually? I'm not finished yet, but anybody got any question on what you've done over so far? My, I guess my next question is, in the backup stuff, it basically said it'd be two years before we have this completed again. Last week in King's package told me that you thought you could shave off at least six months of that. Does that give you?
Well, we talked about the possibility of talking with Perkins about trying to shave some maybe off the design. We've got six months to it, but both of those timeframes are fairly liberal. You have to sit down and talk with them about what they thought they could do unless they can tell you right here.
I guess.
On the contractor side, you have to kinda see the contractor, what would you do, what you're willing to expect to pay for. Sometimes it would pay more faster.
I put together a schedule in Microsoft Project, and I anticipated about four and a half months' design. And then we would have what we call our design project documents, drawings and specifications, and we put those out to bid. And the advertisement and award process takes about a month and a half. And then the city council would award the job to a contractor. And then I don't think we should expect a contractor to do it less than twelve months. But by eleven months, he would be substantially complete. So everything would be running within eleven months, and then you'd have one more month to.
A year to wrap up.
Okay. So we, as we go ahead and start it immediately, then you should measure months at the outset.
A big part of the contractor's time is just getting equipment and ordering and fabricating equipment, and a lot of that initial work occurs offsite. So you don't necessarily see a flurry of activity on the job site the first few weeks. And once that equipment starts coming in, then the work on the job site, you know, just a lot more to answer.
Phase that in while we're still operating the treatment building as well.
Just clarification that this is already budgeted in next year's project, the capital project. So we.
Utility fund, everyone over.
So if we take action tonight, we're just moving that, that will still remain in next year's.
Yeah, when you've heard the budget, you have to speak about it. Also, you're basically through the capital project funding, which involves two point seven million dollars for this project. So that's, that's the funding is.
So as long as you do it tonight, if you go and start October.
Right.
I know you've had a lot of problems with your business.
Oh, yeah. Especially outdoor patios. I mean, we've actually lost customers, businesses to it. And I know other local businesses also have. And it's just, it's so frustrating because you never know when it's coming. You never know how long, how intense it's going to be, how long it's gonna, gonna be around. And it's hard to explain that to customers. And they're coming pound of visit.
If we could control the wind direction when you have those advanced, we'd have a perfect solution.
There you go. Reallocate those blowers.
Yeah, reallocate. I tried to make the dispersion model take into account the lake effect, but I'm pretty sure that's exacerbating the problem. The lake is just immediately north, and it brings some humid air. Unfortunately, our dispersion model, I tried to get an answer out of Lake's environmental to try to incorporate that. The lake, the lake's an unsolvable contributor in share.
I'd like to just go ahead and further move forward this and get it done as quickly as possible. Just sent a couple. One, we're trying to develop this down here. This is what we're talking about every week, every council meeting, about different developments going on down here. If we don't remedy this problem, it's gonna create some real things in the near future, I think.
People.
Yeah. And two, it's really gonna help staff, I think, with Carol's people. And Steve, I'm sure they get tired of hearing the complaints about this and that, because everybody thinks it's their fault or not doing their job, whatever. And it's not really not.
It's coming into wastewater plants that way.
And I understand that, but then, two, they deserve the ability to be able to control it and not have that problem to deal with.
At some wastewater plants, operations can be tweaked a little, but not here, because it's right, it's right at the headworks.
I do realize that some people complain about the peanut roasting smell, too. And they throw it all as one deal. And personally, that doesn't bother me. The peanut roasting is, is okay. But there are people that don't like that either. And this isn't gonna solve any of that problem. So just to throw that out there.
I do have a question. And I don't know whether this is for Perkins or staff, but in the technical memorandum, it talks about the possibility that as you get into this project, you may discover that there is damaged concrete or exposed rebar, and that that would have to be repaired. Does anybody wanna comment on what's the probability and what's the upper end of that cost, and what if due to the delay of the project?
I know there's exposed rebar. We've seen some of that. We're already looking at, we're getting some done with that.
I'll take a shot at that. On a lot of these jobs, when you, when you start draining existing structures and get into them, you find things that just are impossible to see otherwise. And what we typically do when, when we have a fairly large percentage of projects that involves concrete restoration or protection, we usually include a unit price bid item on a per square foot basis or a per linear foot basis for replacing rebar, rebar per square foot for restoring concrete. So the bidder has, and we usually include a fixed quantity. We never know if that quantity's gonna be exactly right, but some educated guesses quantity. So you'll, you'll have a fixed price from the bidder. If you go over or under, I guess we make sure we know what your rules are in terms of, you know, see you're going under, or going under those unit prices. But we try to have something like that in there, so we have a mechanism available for getting that done without.
So it doesn't show up.
Once it's discovered.
Is that based on history with other installations, similar installations, age, et cetera, or is that observation that you made in our facility or combination?
A little of both. And, yeah, frankly, we just really can't know an exact quantity. We take our, take our best educated guess, and hopefully it's in the right ballpark. Hopefully, you don't see any of that, you don't have to spend that money. But it's usually wise to have a, have a plan available for addressing it quickly with the contractor, but not necessarily come back and negotiate if you change order.
With other facilities of similar age and, you know, observable deterioration, what is that done to the schedule? You want me to rephrase that question?
It really depends on how, how bad, how bad the corrosion is. We anticipate, we know there's some reinforcement exposed, usually when that reinforced, my experience been, once it's exposed, I can usually grab my hand and tear off the rebar. It's, once it's exposed, it's pretty much worthless.
We need him to sign some documents if he's gonna be doing that in our facility.
We actually, we had a big.
I promise not to go do that.
Big line failure there, and we had to drain once it was down. And we actually had someone go in there and look, and we do have some exposure rebar. We do know that. And they're aware of that, so some of that is figured in, but.
Typically, you check back the concrete, embed the rebar where it's got good structural strength, and then patch the concrete and then put the coating over it like this gentleman here. So there's fairly standard procedures. And unfortunately, several contractors in this area are familiar with.
We've had a couple of projects replacing rebar and concrete over there over the last few years, haven't we?
Very harsh requirement.
Seems to be a pretty regular, yeah, pretty regular thing.
The drain down doesn't happen until after all the equipment's over and ready to go.
Right.
Yeah, like, you know, one thing that adds a little time is we only take one unit down where we have to still stay in business.
Okay. You have a question?
Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we'll, I'd say if you wouldn't mind doing kind of, you can do a little condiscersion, go to out front, but at least let people know. That way people will see you. You're still by what people, we are getting ready to work this project and taking care of it. Thank you. Okay. Okay. I probably won't call. Okay, let's go ahead. We'll go ahead with Greg or Jayden.
Yes.
Okay. The public hearing was continued from last meeting, so we have a full council. Item one. Item two.
On item three, someone has clarified for me why it looks like to me that we are bearing twice the cost on that, on that project, and are also responsible totally for the, for the maintenance, for the liability, or whatever you wanna call it.
There's a backup exhibit on the allocation of the costs. And answering your first question is basically, the way the city boundaries work at that location, the vast majority of the intersections in Lewisville are one of the relatively small portion that's in Capel because of the way that boundary works. So most of the intersection improvement project is obvious.
So there was also a reference to if Capel chose to upgrade.
Yeah, if they chose to.
And then they would bear that cost, but.
We, yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, they expect basically a standard signal. But if they wanted to kind of decorate their future on it, if they wanted specialized street signs or something, that is not part of the, you'd expect, and they'll pay for that.
The employee, is that employee question? On the expansion or the improvement?
On the signal. I think that's largely what we're talking about, that you're taking special on the intersection. So the intersections, like, yeah, the intersection.
Okay, so basically, it would be on Lewisville City property, but Capel could put Christmas trees on the top of them. And, I mean, this is an example.
They could fancy.
And then do we fancy them? Do we, I understand they pay, but do we have any say as to what they put up as an improvement?
Oh, if they suggested something that we checked to.
Any agreement specifically says that?
We have to agree to it.
Capel and Lewisville have to agree to any upgrades in the right.
Okay, thank you very much. Pink, purple was the color or something like that, that we didn't like to negotiate that.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Is that good?
Yes, sir.
Item four, I'll be abstaining. Mayor Portevano, if you can take over there.
Will you call that?
Yes. And that's the consent. After that, and then after item, we do item four. Then I'll come in and we'll do the, we're gonna move up item fourteen to be the next item, so we can look at consulting at that point. Unless you wanna stay, you're more than welcome to stay, but.
So where are you putting?
Item fourteen will come in right between item five and item six.
Okay.
Basically, it'll do it right after you would not come back in after from abstaining on item four. Then I'll come in and we'll go to item fourteen. You do number five first. Well, number five's part of the consent agenda.
Right.
So it would be passed already.
Okay.
Okay, item six.
Here on item six, we're still tabling?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna ask you to table that item because of the operations to the bond agreements that the attorneys are still working on. It may get tabled for some period of time. I don't know that I can, or the night, would be the alternative?
Table.
Can't do that. You just wanna let the items die, and then we'll put it back on whenever it's ready.
How do you let it die?
Nobody's making any action.
Okay, so I read everything, read the entire item.
Ask for a motion or.
And ask for a motion, and then there's no motion, so item dies for lack of motion. Okay, so we're not tabling it.
Doing a lot of items, past couple weeks.
Burger? We're good at it.
We're killing left and right. Item seven.
Seven, tape. Seven's tabled.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we need to table that one also?
Yes.
Or just let it die?
Yes.
Let it die, okay.
We're not tabling six.
There's another. No action.
No action on seven.
Now, someone makes a motion, I have to accept.
Well, we could have some, we could have some fun with that.
You make the motion. I gotta accept it.
Yeah, but you don't have to have a second, and it still dies.
Right, but if somebody makes a motion again, second, I don't want to do it. Huh? If you're voting. Why are we keeping item seven?
Freddie, you wanna talk about that, selling where, that we were tabling seven?
Seven, yes. Seven relates to item number six concerning sell of the bonds.
The debt service is gonna change because of the sale of future bonds, and so that'll affect your kid.
The numbers in item number six will change when we bring it back, which will change number seven. So it's, it's not useful tonight.
Okay, item eight.
Okay, on item eight, I've got a correction in your backup, an exhibit for that. One of the appropriations under past the project was the one that we're doing under item two tonight. And there's two numbers in there, and the number is, that we shouldn't be doing, but the appropriation is shown in item two, is one, four, eight, zero, seven, thirty-five. So that's for the capital projects fund. I just wanna make that note. I don't have the department motion. I just wanna make you aware of that. Item number two, if you recall, is the Eastern Water Plant Improvement. So there's that appropriation right there, one, four, eight, zero, seven, thirty-five. In the exhibit, we picked up the first number instead of the second number.
But that doesn't change any of the reading?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item nine.
And this is the item that'll have the bond sale associated with it.
So it won't, it doesn't matter that we're potentially approving the other one prior to us approving the budget, does it?
Which other one?
The other one that we looped up, did you?
No.
What's this question?
He was wondering if we're moving the odor abatement item up, if that's in the wrong order for improvement of the project. Really, the odor abatement item is more a description of what is going to happen. You're going to say, yeah, let's do that, and we'll fund it because of budget.
Item eleven. Got a lot of readings tonight, Liz.
We need to hire a micro machines guy.
Item eleven's one where you got that real specific motion that's sent forward by the legislation.
Who wants to do it?
I'll do it. I like reading that one, said quotes.
In theory, those should be the easiest ones to get right.
Item twelve. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is something of a conceptual request at this stage. I think they need some feedback from the council as to whether you're interested in this particular event and the level in which you're interested. Fane's memo goes over the options for you there. Pretty detailed form, but we don't know at this point in time precisely is exactly what cost might be associated with the city's participation because the event hasn't been plotted out in detail for this particular site. There's been some preliminary work done, and so we've done an estimate based on that preliminary work and prior events that we think are similar in size and scope and the type of closures and police activity and other staff support that's required. You've got that number in the backup. The mayor had asked about where the money for that comes from, and it's not going to come from any other event. At this point in time, it would be a general fund absorption. Basically, it's an embedded cost of the general fund for and the utility fund to some extent for the personnel that would be involved in setting up and taking down equipment. Things like tents are already purchased, so there's no new cost for that. But we do have a cost associated with personnel that would be absorbed by the general fund. Would be new money, would just be an opportunity cost, so to speak, if they would be doing something else they would do if they didn't have to occupy the time to do the moves.
Based on the documents, the support documents that were provided, why can't part of this be justified out of H O T?
People...
Why can't part of this be justified out of H O T?
Hotel motel fund is what you're saying. It possibly could be, we just haven't budgeted that. It would require a budget amendment, so...
Okay.
A budget amendment to the hotel motel fund that would pay the general fund back, you could do that.
I'd like to explore that.
This year?
Either 13, 14.
We're not talking about that much money, are we?
Uh, we're talking to seven thousand.
But I didn't...
I wouldn't be opposed to checking out some of the hotel motel money. Maybe not this year, but to invest in and see how it goes, invest in...
Making it sponsored instead of just supportive at some point?
Yep.
See how it goes.
Well, my thing was, I wanted to make sure, see if you plan on taking it out of the budget before Western Week or out of the budget for Christmas Stroll, and we're not. That was not part of the budget, I'm making sure.
That wasn't my intention either.
Right.
Yeah, I would at least ask if staff could explore the H O T option.
Is there any excess money in it?
Yes.
Yep, in the hotel motel budget.
Budget what?
As far as, I was thinking marketing.
Either as marketing or just to reimburse the general fund. I mean, that's overtime for police officers and those types of things.
Could you use hotel motel?
Two different things there.
But you can use hotel motel for overtime, even though it isn't that.
Well, you can for a event that puts a limit, that qualifies under the hotel motel tax, yeah.
So anything that we do for western days that means large, large, western days, huh?
If you want to do that, you probably need to give us some direction during the discussion on the items, so that
What item was that?
Item thirty.
How this all started with discussion is, we obviously were talking originally about doing a beer craft beer tasting at Western Days. If we remember those discussions a couple months ago. Kim and Dana did one last year, this same event out at Texas Motor Speedway. So, we started putting our heads together and saying, well, let's see if we can't pull this together. We proposed it to be at Western Days, but they want to kind of do their own set date, their own event. And I think it's great. I think if we can bring another large event into the Old Town area, that's actually what we do.
That's understandable, too, because of the purpose of their having it is not tourism and it's per se, and it's not, you know, western days per se. It's a charity fund, and I understand that.
Also, just to make a note that they said they possibly could be interested in still doing a portion of western because we're still trying to do the craft beer Western Days for a thing. They said that they potentially would be interested in helping operate that one. Wouldn't be as large, it would be on a smaller scale than what this June event is. But yeah, that could be a great partnership.
I think we also talked about co-marketing. Where each event fits the next event.
Right.
It's not long, and it's going to be similar in the sense that beer tasting, but for different purposes and a different type of beer.
Well, I raised the question, so I'll raise it out there.
Okay. We went over item fourteen earlier. Item fifteen. Everybody got your nominations ready? Are we just doing the chairs for all forty spots?
Looking for four chairs with four committees, and you need to be specific about that. I appoint so-and-so to that committee chair. And then you're looking for whoever else you want to appoint to the committees in general, and we'll assign those people to committees after.
Can I get more of an example of what we're talking about on committee? Diversity, growth, resource management, and connectivity. What does that mean?
That's, if you remember Wendy's presentation, Karen's presentation last time, those are broad topics.
So do they morph into all being the same thing?
Eventually, they basically do. There's a lot of crossover associated with it.
So it's going to be whatever the committee decides to be?
Describe those for them.
Now, connectivity could be anything from streets and trails to how we communicate. That's how broad it is. Diversity can be from the type of housing we offer to the type of activities we offer in our centers. Resource management has a lot of sustainability issues that would be included.
Connective.
Growth management has a lot of economic development initiatives included. There is a lot of crossover between the four.
Economic development might have something to do with a road that you need to buy, so, build, so, it's going to be a lot of that.
And to answer your initial question, is the four captains where you will prom leaders and the forty individual officers?
So it's four plus thirty-six?
It doesn't have to be a round number.
That was the forty-four?
Forty-four in the list, so if you wanted to have us randomly select the people, you would just say, you would make a motion that we appoint that they all be appointed and then assigned randomly to the committees.
That was the other deal. Is this all we're going to look at?
Those are the all the application people.
Right, but I mean, is that, are we exclusively looking at this, or is it wide open?
Well, I think you could probably add someone's name to it if you know they happen to be interested in it, and...
I don't have any.
That's the list that we've been operating on, so we don't know.
Yeah, if someone has someone that they specifically like to serve, and they have visited with about them, they think they like to serve, but they're not on the list, we're certainly likely nominating them if they want.
I had a different read on what we were to do with all the other names other than the chairs from what you just said a few minutes ago.
Did you divvy them up?
No, I didn't. That's the different read.
Was that different?
Well, that's fine, that's what we're talking about.
I'm not divvying them up either.
We're randomly assigned, they were mayor.
Once you appoint the, once you give us the names, we're just going to randomly assign the committees.
I didn't hear, that's somehow not what I thought you said.
I did, they said that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
They did.
Basically, you don't have to say, no, I think that guy would did better than that committee, than that committee.
Yeah, no, that's, my opinion was, we weren't doing that.
And you don't have to appoint all forty?
You could decide, we could decide we only want five, five of our committees.
Committee back to thirty, you could do that.
The recommendation was approximately ten to a committee.
And it just so happens to be about what you have. And it winds up being eleven or some committees.
That's all I had. You have a question, Liz? Anything else, council?
I could get a hard copy, right?
You write paper and print it. Print it up. Do these print now?
You can.
Unless you have a...
That's what I'm hoping. Yeah, my printer can fit it. Is there something we're missing? I would say on that, if somebody wants a hard copy on something, because these don't print.
Just ask Chris.
Just call staff and ask them to get it.
Yeah.
I hate you to put it on your personal computer than that on your personal computer.
Yeah, just give me a printed copy of everything.
Agenda, absolutely. Happy to put the agenda in your box.
All right, Liz, you got anything else? Claude, you got anything else? You got anything else? Okay. Where's Jerry? Somebody want to make sure they get their deal set up?
She's sending out.
Thank you, sir.
Newson has been locked. Just went down to this. And I don't know how to take this document that was emailed to us and then save it on a different part of the computer, like on my desktop. Oh, it's an actual...
Oh, with all that bond stuff?
I think so. I don't remember for sure, Leroy. You have to do it about a hundred times, though, to get it to work. I'm not kidding. And Leroy, you're going to do the prayer, right?
Yes, sir.
Do the prayer.
Okay, is everybody ready? I'm waiting on Mr. King, actually.
Where's Claude?
Why did I get the short chair?
Leroy's got one, too.
Julie, I'm going to have to file a formal complaint about the short chairs again.
I raised your chair today. Still low?
It's lower than Claude's. I'm totally switching. He's taller than I am anyway.
Yours isn't any better. Doesn't look any better.
Oh, it's that? Yeah, thanks. Come and reckon it. It's really simple, I pull my chair up, if I can mash my fingers, then it's the right height. I pull my chair up, I can mash my fingers, and then it's the right height.
Let's try this. Okay.
Yeah.
It is seven o'clock. We do have quorum. Call city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation led by, given by Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn, and then the pledge, both Texas and American flags, by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Gilmore.
Please bow your heads and join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would I have this? This is. I look a little silly turning around. Tonight, we have a special proclamation. Come on down.
Does he have a shirt that's coming off? I don't think he uses it, does he?
Yes.
Oh, they're really using it.
Oh, come on over here. Now, we have a special proclamation that we want to present. You know, over the years, Lewisville's been very fortunate to have a group of people who made sure that we were able to preserve the fine arts in our community. I've been to several seminars and leadership things around the country, and I can tell you that if you look at all the, the successful cities in America today, one of the fun, one of the things that you will find in common in them, and research has been done, is that they have music being used in their city. They have some type of music thing. You can look at it, whether it be Chicago, Austin, New Orleans, Memphis, all these cities, they're big on music. And so, we've had some group of people over the years that have made sure that we've been able to have good, fine arts music here in our community. So, tonight, we want to honor one of those groups. Whereas Louisville Lake Symphony was originally formed in 1984 to enhance the quality of life for people of all ages in North Texas through live and inspiring classical music. And whereas the symphony is managed through a dedicated, all-volunteer board of directors receiving no compensation. And whereas the Louisville Lake Symphony, under, under to continue, Symphony, under to continued direction of her, I'm sorry, this is, this written, I apologize. Direction of Maestro Adrian Meehan is dedicated to offering quality programs featuring local, regional, and international professional musicians, including acclaimed artists and soloists, and is recognized as one of the best regional orchestras in North Texas. And whereas Louisville Lake Symphony has continually focused on introducing young people to the excitement of live classical music and committed to educating and supporting rising young talent. And whereas the symphony annually helps aspiring new and young performers toward their goals through competitions and scholarships, through its annual young artist competition and annual international competition. And whereas the state, the Texas State Senate has committed the symphony for its professionalism and artistic excellence. And whereas the Texas House of Representatives has recognized the symphony's outstanding contribution to the cultural vitality of the region. Now, therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Louisville Lake Symphony Week. And the city of Lewisville encourage all residents to make, make the time to enjoy and truly appreciate the live performance of fine music in our community. Proclaim the sixteenth day of September, two thousand thirteen. And I want to eventually commend each one of you for the work that you've done and the peers that you've worked with over many years. And I understand that you, as I, assuming you'd like Counselor Ferguson to come and accept this proclamation for you, and say a few words. So, Counselor Ferguson?
You may just have wider acceptance of this word, but you did a lot of it.
Thank you, Mayor. I do chair the symphony. I want to introduce the folks up here. Daniel, who is one of our family members.
I guess last meeting.
David Agerson, also one of our family members. Our conductor, Mr. Adrian Meehan, who has always been our conductor, and will always be, and one of our newest board members, but proving to be one of our most active, Sean Kurt. And so, I want to thank all of your help and share this proclamation with you and invite everyone, just fighting to the opening concert of the symphony at the MCL Grand Center at seven thirty p.m. We'll also have a reception in the hall. So, again, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I'll pass that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
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 Any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have any cards filled out for anyone to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any cards filled out, but I am asking to pull item number four from the consent agenda. Councilman Vaughn?
Yes, Mayor.
Would you entertain a motion?
I will entertain a motion to pull item four from the agenda.
Okay, and then what about the rest of the agenda?
And with the rest of the agenda.
The consent agenda.
Oh, approve the consent agenda.
Exception of item four.
Yes.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, that's right, we have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item four and to pull item four. A second by Councilman Gilmore? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn, if you will, I'm gonna abstain because I'm in the insurance business, so if you will, take over please.
Yes, I will, Mayor. As the mayor stated, he's in the insurance business, and in order to alleviate any propriety or being influential in whatever the council may vote on on this item, is being relieved by him stepping away. And item four reads, "The approval of a contract award to Midwestern Employers Casualty Company for excess workers' compensation insurance in the amount of $78,231 for a one-year period with an option to renew for two additional years, and authorization for the city manager to execute all required contracts." Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second by... You seconded the motion.
I seconded it. Rudy, and then me.
Rudy, and Councilman, you got it. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll get the mayor back in here.
Next item on the agenda, I'm going to, I'm going to take a little bit out of order here. We're gonna go to item 14 on the agenda because we have a special consultants here that I'd like to go ahead and let them present, do their presentation. Item 14 is a tabled item, "Consideration of an Odor Abatement Program in Old Town Louisville as requested by myself." This item was tabled at the September 9, 2013 council meeting until Monday, September 16, 2013. We've been having severe problems here in Old Town. Several investigations have been performed seeking the odor, source of the odors. We've had two studies done, conducted in the last several years, and the first study, we're gonna look at trying to remedy this and do an installation of odor control equipment included, which is included in the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, at a cost of 2.7 million. And so at this time, I did have some speaker cards filled out, but what I'd like to do is if I could, let the consultants make their presentation first, and then I'll let those people speak. So if we could have a program. Yeah, I'll be up on the...
My name is Charlotte Smith. I'm with Perkins Engineering Consultants. I'd like to introduce the president of our company, Mr. Mark Perkins. We're here today to give a shortened version of our study results from our sampling study, dispersion modeling, and a preliminary design review. Next slide. We did a full-service, two-day sampling survey out at the wastewater treatment plant. This is just a short snippet of our results. We evaluated all the wastewater treatment processes that are typically odorous or happen odors at other treatment facilities and found that the bulk of the odors here at the, at the Louisville Treatment Plant come from the headworks. They come from the collection system themselves and are released at the headworks. And next slide. The Prairie Creek Pump Station is at the Louisville Wastewater Treatment Plant, and it handles the flow from Old Town. So the wastewater from Old Town flows by gravity into the wastewater treatment plant and into the Prairie Creek Lift Station. The hydrogen's, we have odalogs that we hung at 10 or 12 different locations at the wastewater treatment plant. We hung one in the Prairie Creek Lift Station, and these are the results, our hydrogen sulfide results. Hydrogen sulfide is a great indicator of wastewater treatment plant odors. It's not the only odorous constituent in wastewater, but for headworks, it's the primary culprit. And I know you guys don't necessarily have backgrounds on ranges, but an average of 2 ppm, that's pretty low. So we don't feel that the odors in Old Town are coming from the collection system because they're not being picked up at the Prairie Creek Lift Station. And next slide. The inflow tower... Oh, oh, no. That's a bad thing. The inflow tower is, handles the flow from the Prairie Creek Lift Station as well as the flows from what is known as the Timber Creek Interceptor. The Timber Creek Interceptor is about 60% of the flows that come into the wastewater treatment plant. Here, the odalog, our H2S hydrogen sulfide monitoring instrument, was actually further away from the wastewater, and the concentrations are much, much higher. The peak of 334, that's a dangerous level. Lethal is about 500 ppm. Next slide. We also measured dilutions to threshold or odor units. That's what we use for our dispersion modeling. Here, we sent bag samples off to a laboratory that handles dilution to threshold testing, and they actually have a panel of four that determines how much clean air it needs to be mixed with the odors there to, to not detect the odor. Next slide. We modeled the dilutions to threshold so we could get an indicator of the total impact from the wastewater treatment plant. Here, you can see our model results. They're not to be taken as absolute. They're more indicative of different control scenarios, how you can reduce the odors. The red is indicative of a dilution of seven, dilution to threshold of seven, once per year for 10 minutes. So it's not that the area encompassed by the red is gonna have an odor problem, it's just that they're gonna experience a noticeful order once a year. The red indicates if we do not take any control measures at all, the existing conditions. The orange is if we control the inflow tower and not, and only that at the wastewater treatment plant. The yellow, we bring it in if we control the area to grit units and nothing else. And then the green is what we're recommending, control of both the inflow tower and the area to grit. Next slide. To control odors from the inflow tower and the area to grit, first, we need to contain the odors, and we do that by battening down the hatches. We'll take every treatment system that's open to the atmosphere and plug every hole with either an aluminum flat cover and then maybe some neoprene strips to fill in the gaps. And then, once it's all contained and battened down the hatches, we have to protect the inside from the nasty environment that's gonna be enclosed within by coating the concrete and protecting any corrosive, any metals that may corrode with a coating. Once the, every, all the odors are contained within the structures, we'll pull the foul air off with the white ductwork that's shown and route that to our odor control system. Next slide. On the far left of the photos, you can see some more, another example of that foul air duct, and that's what we'll use to pull the foul air from the, both the fine screens or the inflow tower, the area, and the area to grit units over to a bioscrubber. The bioscrubber, it's a manufactured odor control system. There's at least six manufacturers which we're extremely comfortable with of this, of this treatment technology. And it brings the foul air down from the bottom of the bioscrubber. The foul air goes through an inorganic media that's warranted to last at least 10 years, and then by the time it's released from the top of the bioscrubber, 99% plus of the hydrogen sulfide is removed. The bioscrubber only holds the foul air for about 20 seconds, so it does have a little bit of trouble treating more of the complex organic compounds, the reduced sulfides and whatnot, but we don't find a lot of those in the headworks. Those primarily come from wastewater treatment plants that have primaries and then more complex solids handling systems. So we see bioscrubbers as a great fit here in Louisville. In conjunction with the improvements for the odor control system, we'd, we recommend improving the area to grit units. They're, they were constructed in the 80s and of suitable technology back when they were constructed, but now vortex grit removal systems, which take the air, it's basically a very slow centrifuge, and it'll knock the heavy grit and other inorganics down to the bottom of the vortex, and then the clear organics, the organics and the lighter weight materials will float onto the aeration basins as they should. And we can fit the vortex grit units within the existing aeration grit basins, which will minimize any piping work that needs to be done and minimize any of the concrete work that needs to be done. And an added bonus is we will be able to reduce the size of the bioscrubber because there'll be less foul air coming off the grit removal units, and we'll be able to decommission two 40-house power blowers and replace those with just little two-horsepower motors for the paddle wheels. Next slide. The, this is the Google SketchUp of the existing inflow tower. The fine screens are shown in blue, and we propose the red equipment, which will take, currently, the fine screens discharged into dumpsters that are open to the atmosphere down below, and we propose to discharge the screenings instead onto an enclosed conveyor and bring those screenings to a washer compactor, we'll need one on each side, to wash the screenings and remove any of the organics and remove the water by at least 50%, and then take that somewhat fresher, more pleasant, less, less prone to attract vectors, and take that to an open dumpster where it will not cause as, will not need to be enclosed because it will not have organics, it will not have a significant percentage of organics in it. We'll have a duplicate system, one on each side, that was found to cost out cheaper than trying to pipe the screenings around and just have one system, and plus, we'll have redundancy with the dual system. Next slide. As part of our odor survey, we looked at all of the odorous treatment processes that could be impacting offsite odors, but we found that the other odorous treatment processes didn't generate enough odors to warrant any abatement measures. The aeration digesters in the dewatering building currently do not impact offsite according to our dispersion modeling and sampling results, but if operations were to change, say if we added primaries or switched to an anaerobic process, it would be about $1.7 million to control odors from the dewatering building, but at this time, that's, that's not recommended. Next slide. Here is an aerial with the improvements that are recommended delineated. This will be further expanded upon in design and turned into drawings for a contractor to bid on. Fortunately, all the improvements are in the northwest corner of the plant, which will make, make for an easier construction project. Next slide. The opinion of probable construction cost is delineated here. The bulk of the money will be for the bioscrubber and its associated ductwork. The vortex grit removal units, which will replace the area to grit, and as well as the washer compactors and the conveyor equipment and all that total 1.8, about 1.8 million dollars, and then plus the typical multipliers for a, for a project at this stage in the game. We'll, we'll reduce contingency as we move further and further in detailed design, but we'll probably find things that we need to, to use that contingency money on, which is why contingency is high at this point, but we'll, we'll reduce that to 5% by the time the project is bid. And next slide. The next four slides are a background on our odor control experience, odor and control experience. We have several clients locally that we'd be more than willing to give you contact information for, and then the next, two slides after that summarize our recent design experience and give you the associated construction cost for those improvements. And then the last slide, it is just a summary of the project team, and the lead will be the company, company president, Mark Perkins. He has 32 years' experience. I will be the project manager, and also have quite a bit of experience in odor assessment and dispersion modeling. And Lou Gorowski, he's our graduate engineer, and he will be assisting me on the design project, but I'll be taking the lead. And I don't have him pictured, but James McMillan, he will be doing the QC review for us, and just to put a plug in for us, Mark and James are both on the National Committee for the odor and control, odor and corrosion control committee, so... Are there any questions?
I just, a couple of things. I understand, in the backup, we told that this project was looking at basically a two-year completion, but I understand if council was go ahead and, and give recommendation to staff tonight to go ahead and move forward with this and on a fast track and get it done that you, it's your, but I understand your firm doesn't actually do the, the construction works yet, but you do design the project, and then we had put that out to bid, and then once we do have the construction company do the bid, then you would oversee it and have monthly meetings with them and making sure everything's done according to your specifications, correct?
We would, and we'd be responsible for reviewing all sub-metals from the contractor for the equipment and whatnot, and then monthly coordination meetings during construction.
And you think if we can go ahead, you think we could possibly get it done in probably 18 months from designed to pretty, pretty much finished?
Design and advertisement, we, we did a, the Microsoft project schedule, design will be about four and a half months, advertisement about a month and a half, and then substantial completion, it'll be ready to go in 11 months, but we'll give the, maybe even sooner, but we need to give the contractor some time to, to finish up any remaining punch list items, so it, we should give the contractor about 12 months, and then we'll take about six months to get it ready for a notice to proceed for the contractor.
Okay. Any other, council, any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, do have a couple of speaker cards here. One is Carol Longacre from Main Street in Louisville. Carol? If you'll just give your name and address, please.
My business address?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Carol Longacre, 306 West Main Street, Louisville, Texas. I speak in favor of the odor abatement. Been in Old Town, I think abating the odor would be a good thing.
Thank you. And Lindsey Holiday. There she is. Same thing, Lindsey, if you'd just keep your name and address, please.
Lindsey Holiday, 201 Oakbrook Drive. I am on, I'm here as a citizen, business owner, and the president of Old Town Business Association tonight, so we're just in favor of council approving the motion to city staff to move forward with the, with the alleviation of the smell in Old Town. The city's already invested a lot of money in the area, and this will help with further developments that are on the table right now. We're happy that the city's being proactive with the measure, and we're just saying, let's go for it, why wait? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And do have a card here by Travis Holiday, did not wish to speak, but he is in support of this item. I did ask this item to come forward because I know as, as you, as the rest of council have, have been having the problems of the odor yourselves, plus the complaints from citizens on the odors themselves. We had a very bad event down here during the Labor Day rodeo that was here, and so wanted just to try to make sure that the citizens knew that we did have something in progress, but I wanted to try to see if council would like to kind of fast-forward that and see if we could get it done quicker than a two-year timeframe, and it sounds like if we go ahead and give staff that direction tonight, and if we approve the budget, which is on the agenda later tonight, this money is already appropriated for the, for no, I mean, for county year 13, 14 budgets, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Then we could go ahead and get it done in at least, she's saying on the outset, a year and a half, so we look forward to that. Councilman Tierney, start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very much in support of this. We have had this problem in Old Town for as far back as I can remember. Having a business here in Old Town, I've actually experienced people, customers coming and actually leaving due to that smell, and the challenge is, of course, that you just don't know when it's gonna come, you don't know how long it's gonna stay, or how intense it's going to be, so we've just been really chasing a ghost down here for years, so I'm very, very excited to get this project up and running and finished as soon as possible. Having said that, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, a second by Councilman Gilmore, and is that also with instructions staff to go ahead and expedite as soon as possible?
That is, sir.
Okay. Is that okay, counselor? We have a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you very much for coming tonight and giving your presentation, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go back to the regular order now. Item six is "Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed $6,150,000, City of Louisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Refunding Bonds Series 2013, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number One Project, the Series 2013 Refunding Bonds in accordance with the terms of the trust agreement, authorizing the defeasance and refunding of $5,710,000 of the outstanding City of Louisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Refunding and Capital Improvement Bonds Series 1998, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number One. The Series 1998 bonds are the refunded bonds, approving and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement, authorizing a final offering statement pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2013 Refunding Bonds, delegating authority to authorized officials to finalize certain sale terms relating to the Series 2013 Refunding Bonds, finalize a deposit agreement, and finalize a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date and containing other matters related to the services 2013 Refunding Bonds." Entertained a motion to approve?
Move to approve. As stated.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Gilmore.
Oh, did I jump the gun?
Do I have a second?
Oh, that's the one, yeah, moving ahead. Smile, I retract that motion.
Do we have another motion? For lack of motion, the item dies. Item seven, "Consideration of an Ordinance Approving the 2013 Annual Assessment Service Plan Updates for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District, Pid Number One." Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Hearing no motion, motion, item dies. Item made is "Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Fiscal Year 2012-2013 Adopted Budget. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend fiscal year 2012-13 adopted budget to include all supplements and charges approved by the city council throughout the year. Large percentages of these appropriations include the routine supplemental completed each year for prior year encumbrances that overlap into the next fiscal years. Others relate to actions taken to fund unbudgeted items during the year." Councilman Durham.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
Excuse the counselor, I'm sorry.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and improved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1st, 2012 to September 30th, 2013, by providing supplemental appropriations to the various funds, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is "Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section Two dash 201 Fee Schedule. As part of the annual budget process, changes to the fee schedule based on analysis of current charges as compared to cost recovery goals, authorized charges that may no longer be applicable, and new fees are reviewed and modifications proposed. These changes include items discussed at the budget workshop held on August 3, 2013, as well as newly proposed modifications. Detail for each recommended change included in the backup information." Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve. As written.
Have a motion to approve by...
Please, somebody second this, please.
By Councilman Gilmore, as recommended.
Second.
Second by Councilman Durham. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Section Two dash 201 Fee Schedule with various fees charged by several departments of the city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, "Consideration of an Ordinance Adopting the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Operating Budget. The proposed operating budget for all funds has been prepared by staff and reviewed by the council. Approval of this ordinance adopts an operating budget for all funds beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014. A draft budget document is available for public review at the city secretary's office, the library, and the city website. I'm not sure if I read that correctly, so I'm gonna read it over again, beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014. Recordations that council approved the ordinance as set forth in the above caption." Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the item as stated.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve as presented.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting and approving a budget for the city of Louisville, Texas, for the year beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014, providing for an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, "Consideration of an Ordinance Adopting the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Tax Rate. This action will adopt the city's annual ad valorem tax rate for all taxable property at $0.44021. So that's 44.44021 cents per $100 of its assessed valuation. The rate combines the following: maintenance and operations at 0.32289, and principal and interest on debt of 0.11732, for a total tax rate of 0.44021. While the proposed tax rate for, for the proposed tax rate for the proposed is required in the ordinance, the vote on the ordinance must be, must be a recorded vote, and the motion to adopt the ordinance must be made in the following form. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.44021, which is effectively a 4.0946% increase in the tax rate. Recordations that council approved the proposed ordinance in the as presented above." Councilman Ferguson.
Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $0.44021, which is effectively a 4.0946% increase in the tax rate.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the city of Louisville, Texas, for the year 2013-2014, upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the state of Texas and the charter, and the charter provisions in all ordinances of said city, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effect, an effective date and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, "Consideration of a Vote to Ratify the Property Tax Rate Revenue Increased Reflected in the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Proposed Budget." tax rate revenue increased reflected in the fiscal year 2013, 2014 proposed budget. Local Government Code, Section 102.007, requires that the option of a budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year, also requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. The fiscal year 2013, 14 budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $1,655,521, which includes general, TIF, TIRZ number two, and debt service funds. Recommendation is that council that the recommendation of staff is that council ratify their property tax revenue as presented. Councilman Durham?
Move to approve per the recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration request to waive special event fees and provide in-kind equipment and staff support for Best Little Brew Fest in Texas in June 2014, as requested by Cloud Nine Charities. Cloud Nine Charities held its first craft beer event, Best Little Brew Fest in Texas, in June 2013 as a charity fundraiser. The group has expressed interest in moving the event to Old Town Lewisville starting in 2014, and has requested some level of city assistance. There are several options available to the city depending on the level of involvement desired by council. Recommendation is that council give direction to staff regarding the desired level of involvement with Cloud Nine Charities and Best Little Brew Fest in Texas. Do have several cards here. First, have Kim Cloud. Kim, if you'd just give your name and address for record.
Yes, I'm Kim Cloud, and 219 Barkley. Can I have Dainer come up with me at the same time?
Sure. This is Damon Stinson.
Dainer Stinson.
Yes. And then if you'd also give your name and address for record, please.
I'm Dainer Stinson. I'm at 219 Barkley Avenue in Hickory Creek.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and council, and city employees. I've been a resident server, business owner of Lewisville, Flower Mound, Highland Village, Denton County, for 34 years. But tonight, I'm here representing Cloud Nine Charities. We're a 501(c)(3) that's been in existence for 11 years. We do events, all located in Denton County, mostly Lewisville, that have raised money for existing charities, family, children. We've helped Children's Advocacy, CASA, PD Place, Sue Weaver Cause, recently Rachel's Challenge, very involved in the community and what's going on. But tonight, we're here to get your approval for the Best Little Brew Fest in Texas.
The Best Little Brew Fest in Texas had its inaugural event this past June at Texas Motor Speedway. We hosted about 1,200 people there, and we hosted about 54 different breweries, many from Texas and across the country. We probably had one of the most exciting events that Cloud Nine Charities has ever put on. It was a really fun time, had a lot of people there. Comment about the excellent execution and organization of the event. We had over 130 volunteers that helped orchestrate the event. Many of our committee leaders and volunteers are here with us tonight. Although, the first year of the Brew Fest was well planned and executed, Cloud Nine Charities wants to do more. And we feel like that we want to bring this festival to the heart of downtown Lewisville. We feel like a partnership of some sort would really benefit not only the downtown and the city itself, but also provide a, an avenue for the Best Little Brew Fest in Texas to really grow and compete with some of the area events and festivals that are currently taking place. I think we are asking the council this evening to approve the Best Little Brew Fest in Texas for June 21st and 2014, and to allow Cloud Nine Charities to use resources that the city can provide. As we move forward with event planning, and see how expenses are impacted by the new location, we may ask the council for additional support. But we want to ensure that we will put on the best possible Brew Fest, and it will be well executed. We want to ensure that this event here in Old Town will prove that, help put the city on the map, and provide for future growth for the downtown area and the city overall. We would love to have our festival come to Old Town Lewisville, and to help make a difference both in Lewisville and in all of North Texas. Thank you.
Do the council have any questions for them at this time?
I do. In the letter of support from OTBA, and this may simply be because they're not familiar with the terminology, but they requested that this be a city-sponsored event. In the staff's letter to council, they offer the option of city-sponsored and city-supported. At this time, there's still a lot that's, to me, very uncertain about what you need and, and which level of support you need. And I'm not opposed to this being a city-sponsored event at a time in which I better understand that that, what that level, why that level of support is being requested, and, and what it would do for you that a city-supported event would not do. So my question to you is, what are you asking for? Are you, and you can either, I'm not really looking for details, I'm not looking for tents, and, you know, the question is, what, what did you have in mind, a city-sponsored event or a city-supported event, or do you know?
Well, of course, we want a city-sponsored event, but our, this, this festival was not real expensive. And so much of our costs, you would be able to help us with just because it's things you already have. So at this point, we have a very rough budget, but a lot of our things were donated. We look forward to that, those sponsorships again from outside vendors. And we'd just like it to leave it open to where if there are additional costs that come, that we could come to the city and ask for that support.
So would you be satisfied if it were tonight, the, the council's offer to give city support, and then come back when you have more details that perhaps justify moving up a tier to city-sponsored and making that request at another time?
Yes, absolutely. We would take support at this time and come back in the future for detailed sponsor numbers.
Okay. I know I'd be more comfortable with that. I would probably be comfortable with the city support. I mean, I know you, I like you, and I like what you do. I'm not trying to work against you, but it's always going to be the case that I'd be more comfortable with granting city-sponsored designation to something where a lot of details are, are clear, you know, very well established. So that's, and that's the concern.
Right. And Mr. Ferguson, like, one example is, where we had at the Speedway, we had venue cost, and we won't have that. And we had rental fees for tents and tables and chairs, and we won't have that. So a lot of our fees will already naturally go away with the support of the city. Sponsor levels would come in as we get more detailed on what additional things we would have to have this year that's different from, or in 2014 that was different from this year.
Okay. I'm going to ask, too, if it's appropriate for the staff, perhaps, to make some comment about their view on this, the question I've raised. So, sorry to catch you off guard.
Okay, before we do that, let me just read these support cards, and then we can kind of go forward with that. Do have support cards here. These people did not wish to speak, but they are, these people here are in support of this event. Lindsay Holiday, 201 Oakbrook Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Todd Hoff, 1150 Wake Forest Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Mark Wagner, 256 East Corporate, Lewisville, Texas. Sidney Wilson, 1420 Main Street, number 101, Lewisville. Nathan Dean, I hope I'm saying that right, it looks like it's Dean. 1650 Juniper Lane, Lewisville, Texas. Amber Dean, I must have read that right. 1650 Juniper Lane, Lewisville. Elise Compton, 202 North Keeley, Lewisville. Amanda Ferguson, 135 West Main Street, Lewisville. Travis Holiday, 136 West Main, Lewisville. Cynthia Baird, 350 Continental Drive, Lewisville. Summer Rhine, 2510 Fox Trail Circle, a fox, a fox something circle, can't read that, Denton, Texas. Donald Harvey, 601 Hill Street, Aubrey, Texas. Stacy Mahay, 101 Blue Bonnet Drive, Highland Village, Texas. Adam Weeks, 1947 Rambling Ridge Lane, Carrollton, Texas. Matt Morrow, 2725 Laurel Oak Drive, McKinney, Texas. Tony Evans Morrow, 2725 Laurel Oak Drive, McKinney, Texas. KJ Anderson, 313 Post Oak Drive, Highland Village, Texas. Karen Cheatham, 300 North Ackers Street, number 1907, Dallas, Texas. Brad Compton, 305 Lakeland Drive, Highland Village, Texas. And I'm sorry, but I can't read it. Maybe it's Brian Tomas, 600 Spring Creek Court in Highland Village, Texas. Sally Tanes, 101 Hickory Ridge, Highland Village, Texas. Sony Rath, 2802 Front Trail, Keller, Texas. Amy Jenkins, P.O. Box 270118, Flower Mound, Texas. Tad Summerfield, 232 Bear, I can't read that drive, it's in Keller, Texas. Carol Longacre, 221 Ferndale Drive, Highland Village, Texas. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. King, go ahead.
Can I say one other thing first? Sorry. Don't, don't misunderstand me. I hope you know I like this event. I think it would be a great event. The concern really is, as you designate a certain level of support, you're also setting a precedent for other groups that come in and say, you know, I, I'm only doing this, but they got that level of support, and why shouldn't I?
Absolutely.
And so that, knowing that you've, if you come back and justify for the higher level, that I can then make that argument back that, well, understand ultimately, this is what they requested, and this is what they need, that's the world of difference. Does that?
Absolutely. I understand that. And what I would say to that, too, is that because Cloud Nine Charities has been around for 11 years, we have the people and the resources and the volunteers to really help make this a successful event, compared to Grape Fest is also done by a very successful charity organization. So a lot of people would say they would do it, but we will really do it.
Okay.
I have one question, Mayor. Due to your tax status as a charitable organization, was there some reason you didn't go through the community development block grant process?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I was, can you hear me now?
Uh huh.
I was wondering, due to your tax status, was there some reason that you didn't go through the community development block grant program?
What? I guess I'm not aware.
She may not be aware of it.
Oh, okay.
I sound like she'd be aware of it?
I would say the timing of that.
That would be a good reason, I guess, if you weren't.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
Maybe that's something maybe you should look into. Staff will be glad to assist you if they can.
Okay, thank you.
It may be even a little bit short of time this year to even approach it that way.
This is looking for 2014 event.
I have a question, point of clarification. Is this, would this even be available under CDBG?
It probably would not, unless they could document that some source of the funds, or some use of the funds was going directly to eligible recipients of the federal funds, which would mean the lower income. So they'd have to go through that process. It's possible. I don't want to say it's impossible, but it'd be a little bit of a...
Stretch.
I don't want to say stretch either. We'd have to look at what they wanted to use the funds for, and how they were going to document how those funds were used. I liken the charity here to United Way, in that it's a general fundraiser for other agencies. You don't actually provide services directly yourself, is my understanding. So typically, the CDBG recipients are direct service providers. And so you can, you have to be able to document that the services rendered go toward those eligible recipients. So we'd have to kind of figure out how that might play into it. But it's certainly worth looking into.
We have one, we hate to use the word program, but for lack of a better word, called Bedtime Rescue, that we started in December of 2012. And we have housed over 500 nights for local homeless families. So we get a phone call...
Something like that might be ineligible use.
That piece might make us qualify, but we get our phone calls through communities and schools about a family that's homeless, and we house them in a local hotel. And the funding all comes from Cloud Nine Charities.
We can fill you in on how that program works and what the eligibility requirements are.
Okay, thank you.
The CDBG question kind of lets me segue into the other question that I raised in the workshop, which is, I view this as a, perhaps, an excellent visitor opportunity. And so the question for staff that I'd like to couple with this is to investigate the possibility of using Hotel Oxy Tax as one means of funding this project. So I want to get that on the record. Okay, sorry. And that doesn't affect you. That's just where the money comes from.
That's right.
It might even be helpful.
Yeah, that would be great.
Anybody else have any comments?
I've had the opportunity to kind of see some of the events around and talk with a lot of folks in the community. The microbrew community here in North Texas is growing by leaps and bounds. The state legislature has opened up opportunities for those businesses that were, up until this year, really only the purview of the wine manufacturers here in the state. They've had these rules for years available to them, which is one of the reasons why Grape Fest has become what it has become, is because the state has allowed it. I believe this is a really great timing thing for Lewisville. I think it's going to be great for those businesses. And I think it'll be a real community builder as well. I mean, you heard 130 volunteers, so, you know, right from, from their organization. And that's, that's something we don't have with other city events. At this time, most of our city events are driven by city employees, city staff. So being able to have just the man-hours available from a group that's passionate about their event, and having it give back to organizations that we actually fund using CDBG, so PD Place and those types of organizations. I think there's a lot of, you know, to use a really tired word, synergies, that we can tap into for this next year. So I'm really excited to see it come to Old Town.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Councilman Tierney?
I guess I'm a little bit confused as to exactly what, Councilman Ferguson, what you're, what you're asking for. From what I see, we have an estimated, I understand that these plans aren't final yet, but we have estimated cost of about $6,200 bucks, which would be the city staffing?
Basically staff cost related to setting up the tents, so trash pickup, police and fire, staff support.
Okay. So as we get closer to the event, that may come up a little bit, may come down a little bit, depending on how the actual site plan is finalized. If it, how much would it possibly go in either direction?
It's really difficult to estimate. You know, we do supply the tents. I know that in discussions with Kim, that she may have resources to offset the cost, like, of generators. I would say generators are one of the largest costs, next to the actual purchase of the alcohol. Is that correct? But they have a lot of resources that I think that they can bring into play to offset costs. So that makes it a little bit more difficult for us to estimate. I will tell you, I would remind you, when we did the Cinco de Mayo support, which was a city-sponsored, we sponsored $10,000 cash.
I'm sorry, how much?
$10,000 for that event.
And that's the primary difference between support and sponsorship. In sponsorship, you're actually kicking money into the event, as opposed to just in-kind services or something like that. I know it's, still, you can argue that the in-kind services are money, but it's different than cash, when you're writing a check to someone. And for that to happen, you have to be certain that you're getting something in terms of a public use and public benefit that you want, number one, and that they can document, number two. You can't just make a charitable contribution. That's not allowed under... That's not allowed under law, as I understand it. So you have to be able to buy something. And so if you're buying a generator and you're promoting visitation to Old Town, okay, but again, the differentiation between support and sponsorship would be that cash expenditure. That's the primary difference.
And so what would happen if these, if the numbers come in different? We would have to bring this back before council and approve any additional?
If there were a request for additional support, we would bring that back to the city council.
So if that number, $6,205, went up, we would come back and approve whatever that vote on?
Yes, sir, we would make that request. It would likely be from the Hotel Motel Fund, because we do see this meets the definition of visitation.
Probably be back anyhow with street closures.
Okay, I am in support of this, 100%. I think it's a great event for the city of Louisville. I think it's a great event for Old Town. I think what TJ said and what Kim brought up, the fact that we're partnering with an established charitable organization that has proven itself in special events. I liken it very much to Grape Fest, where the Grapevine Heritage Society is actually taking the lead of that event. And we all know how huge that event is these days. They take the lead. They're supported by the city staff and the Chamber of Commerce and their downtown business association. But it's the Grapevine Heritage Foundation that's taking the lead. I see that very similar here. And I think with Cloud Nine Charities taking the lead, the city just supporting the event. I think that this event could really go to the next level. And I think, like TJ said also, that right now, I think there is a demand for it. I think it's a very, very good timing. So for this small amount of money, the $6,200, I'm definitely in favor, and I can't put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
And, so I will put it in the form of a motion. Finish my thought. If we do, this would be something that in the future, I would potentially support Hotel Motel, additional Hotel Motel funding to go in for potential marketing of the event.
And Mr. Tierney, if I can say that one example of that would be that as this event grows, I mean, we would be bringing, we're hoping, you know, for a minimum of 4,000 people for 2014. So the tents that the city have may not be enough. We would need more tents. And that's where we might be coming back to you, is, you know, sponsorship dollars for very, very specific items that we would need for the event.
That brings a question. Staff have any estimates on head count for Cinco de Mayo? I know that was a few years back.
Of course, that was not a gated, ticketed event. So it was all based on estimates from staff on site. The largest crowd that we estimated was a little less than 2,000 people.
Okay, thank you.
To answer your question, Councilman Tierney, you asked what I was trying to do. The request is for council to provide staff with a level of support, a, you know, a directive on level of support going forward. The request is not for money. The request is for services, it's for in-kind. So being an in-kind request, the answer to the question is city-supported. There is no city sponsor request at this time. And the item is, the motion is to tell the staff that answer. So the motion would need to say, you know, I move that the city support this event. Or if you wanted to say the city sponsor this event, the problem is there isn't any request for sponsorship. It's just for support. So the, do you follow me? I mean, that was the point I was making.
That's perfectly clear. So I think, should I rephrase my motion?
I think you need to, or I will.
I'd like to make a motion that the city council support this event by waiving special events fees and providing in-kind equipment and staff support for the Best Little Brew Fest in Texas in June of 2014. And that, with that support, dollar-wise, going up to $6,250.
Second again.
I have a motion, and a second, a motion by Councilman Tierney, a second by, Councilman Durham?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
If, if it, Kim, Kim, if it turns out there's a need for city-sponsored, I mean, you understand the difference, so definitely come back, make that request.
Come back with a detailed budget and ask for millions. Just kidding.
Good luck. Thank you.
Item 15, consideration of appointment of committee chairs and members of the four 2025 committees. A presentation was made at September 9, 2013, City Council Workshop, related to the appointment of four committees that represent broad topic areas. These four committees include diversity, growth, resource management, and connectivity. These four areas were themes seen in public response to the 2025 surveys and activities. Our 2025 project consultant is recommending that the city council appoint a chairperson for each committee and that the remaining applicants be appointed randomly to the four committees. The reputation is council appoint a chairperson to each of the four 2025 committees. Councilman Durham, you want to start off?
Sure, you want to start with the chairpersons?
Have you liked it?
I would recommend that we, I'll just throw out four names here in no particular order. Ronnie Cade, Sharon Ellis, Amanda Ferguson, and Charles Emery. And since what we talked about in the workshop was that the titles that they would have on the chair were basically interchangeable. So if we want to just put them in as those, in the order I called them out, the same order they're in, diversity, growth, resource management, and connectivity.
Mayor, I've got a little different take on that.
Okay.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'll take it.
I don't think that was a motion. Was it, that was just your comment. Let's throw them out there. Okay. All right, let's, okay, go ahead. No, go ahead. That's all right, go ahead.
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
All right. So I'll approach this a little bit differently. I looked at it from each one of those committees. Yes, they are broad in topic, but I felt that if you picked committee chairs, they might bring a certain spin to it, a certain direction, based on that chair. I also looked at people that I felt brought a lot of ability to lead a group, because we're talking a group of 10 to 12, maybe eight, that they would be as a committee chair, having to kind of herd that group and keep them on task, especially challenging when you have a broad topic. So when I looked at that, I thought of some of the folks that had shown leadership in various areas, and I thought of Amanda Ferguson for diversity. She brings a lot to the table in that regard. Brent Daniels, his time on P&amp;Z, as well as being a business owner, I thought went well with the growth. Connectivity, Mr. Emery. He brings not only the DCTA experience, but also connectivity to the larger region as a whole. So that was my thought on that one. And then the fourth one is a name that I don't think most council are aware of or know, but is a woman by the name of Jennifer Lindy. She actually works for the Corps of Engineers and runs training and other events for them. So is very used to being in front of a committee. But from a resource management standpoint, she has a tremendous grasp of things like water and property and park space and those types of things. And she would bring a lot to the table in that role. So those would be my four, and my reasoning for them. And I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Tierney?
I wrote down four names, and it's kind of amazing how close that they are. My four names, Amanda Ferguson, Charles Emery, Ronnie Cade, and John Paul Lewis. So I think the only differences between Rudy was Sharon Ellis, and I would have no problems appointing Sharon. With TJ, it was Brent Daniels. Think he'd do a fine job. I'm not quite familiar, like you said, I'm not familiar with that fourth person. But like your line of thinking with putting those chairpersons where you have them. So those were my names.
Councilman Ferguson?
I'll go ahead and let, Councilman Vaughn. No, I'm trying to, I'm having to re-sort my list.
Yes, Mayor. I, I made some phone calls regarding this topic and spoke with probably half a dozen people. And the ones that stood out for me as possible chairpeople, chairpersons, were some of the names that we've heard here. But as an example, I would, I could support Ronnie Cade in, well, some, I could support her in connectivity, or connection. Steve Southwell, resource management. Sharon Ellis, diversity. And the final one was growth. And I would like to see Ron Aljo in growth, as the chairman of growth. And I think the reason I've, the reason I've selected these names is because after having talked to these people, they have all stated an interest in a specific area. And having dealt with them personally, I feel as though they could contribute quite a wealth of assistance to the 2050 program.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So I haven't really shuffled my list, but I was just trying to get us resolved here. And the problem is, I'm sort of three out of four. We all seem to agree on Amanda, I think. Am I correct on that?
No.
No?
No, he didn't, Leroy didn't have any.
I'm sorry, we didn't all agree on Amanda. I happen to favor Amanda, and I think, first of all, let me back up. When I was looking at the list, the questions I started to ask myself were probably similar to TJ's. Who had leadership skills? Who could lead a group? Not drive a group in a direction, but just make sure that everybody was heard, different views were heard, and was used to managing group dynamics. And so that was very influential into my shorter list, which was still about a dozen people. Ironically, I think I have two names on my shorter list that didn't pop up. The rest of them did. Amanda, Brent Daniels, Charles Emery. I like those names. Name that I had that didn't pop up, John Larson, but I don't know how many people are familiar with John. I've worked with him on different committees, more in sort of, I guess you'd say, the general sector, schools, things like that. And find he's highly organized, highly sincere, can manage the dynamics of a group. But it just throws another name out there in the basket. So, you know, I can withdraw that name and give you yet another one. Steve Southwell would probably be my other choice. So Steve Southwell or John Larson for my fourth person.
Okay, we have a...
Wide range.
A range of opinions as to the four. I'm really hesitant to, I mean, if you want to have some debate, that's fine. But I'm really hesitant right now, I guess, to try to say, okay, we're going to take this person and lead this person, and going, battering back and forth as to personality. I don't want anyone to think that they're being left out or anyone to feel like they're being, someone else is being chosen over them.
I've got an option for you, if you want.
What is that?
Well, you know, we talked about this a little bit at staff level, and there's two different approaches. One is the one where you actually appoint someone to be the chairperson with the idea that somebody you feel like really helps that particular topic. The other one would just be let the members of the committee appoint a chairperson themselves. Once the appointments are made, and once the assignments are made, then they would elect a chairperson of their choosing. And again, of course, the difference there is that council doesn't exert as much control over the chair through the appointment process. So there's kind of a different approach there.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we change this up a little bit, basically on what Claude was saying? That I would make a motion that we appoint all 44 that are on our list of the applicants to the committee. And then let's figure out where we're at after that. And the committee chairs, however it's defined, would come from this list that are appointed.
I get what you're saying. From the four committees that are randomly assigned.
The 44 that are appointed to the committee.
So how do we determine the chairs?
He, just, you're just saying, let's move forward.
Hold on, let's don't be talking over each other. Nobody can hear, everybody starts talking at once. So what I'm understanding you to say is basically that we kind of start over, and we, instead of looking at doing the chairs right now, at this moment, you look at just nominating all 44 people who have, who are on the list, who have filled out an application to be on one of the committees.
There won't be a one of the committees. There's one committee.
That's one of the four committees, whichever one.
Well, if I, the way I understood what they're talking about on the committees, there will be one committee, and they will rotate in some form or fashion.
Now, they're not going to rotate, no.
They're going to do something.
We're going to randomly assign them.
Okay, they're going to randomly assign. But that means they're not going to be all on one committee the whole time.
They're going to be on one committee, one of these four committees, the whole time.
Yes, but you may not have all of the same, 10 people on the same committee.
For the whole time.
No.
That's what, that's what the plan is right now.
That is not what was said.
The idea is to randomly assign 44 people to these four committees. So if you wind up and your name pops up and it says Rudy Durham, you're on the growth committee, you're on the growth committee. And the next...
That isn't the way I interpreted it the other day. What was mentioned that I heard?
Randomly assigning people to committee assignments.
No, all we were supposed to do is the chair. And then the chair would be, it would come some kind of random after that.
Correct, but the way I was interpreting what was being suggested is you want to go ahead and randomly assign them now, and then let those, and then see who pops up on what committees, and then pick a chair from there.
I think that, I think that's, that makes sense to me. That would be the most expeditious way. Randomly assigned, so each committee has their 11 people, and have that committee vote for a chair.
Or you could appoint it from that list.
That is not what the people that were going to, the, whatever the group we're paying to oversee this.
Well, that's exactly how we described it.
That isn't the way I took it, because the chair would only be the only one that stayed stationary, and the other ones would move. And there would be, there would be 10 other people on there.
Actually, we talked about the chairs interacting with each other more than the individual members of the groups.
Okay.
Sorry.
Get past that. I make a motion that we put all 44 that have made application on the committee, on the whole big committee.
Second.
What?
What is the whole big committee?
And then randomly, then randomly separate them.
Somebody has to do it.
I assume, you didn't say that, so.
Okay, so if I understand, if I understand this correctly, Councilor, your motion is to appoint the 44 people that are on the list that have filled out applications to serve on the 2025 committee, to appoint those people to the 2025 committee?
Yes.
I'm good with that. Second.
We have a motion, as I stipulated. I hope everybody understood that. Did you get that, Julie? That these 44 people would be appointed to the 2025 committee? Okay, and we have, is that correct, Mr. Councilman Durham? We have a second by Councilman Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm still confused. If we do that, and I'm fine with that, obviously, that was our plan, is to appoint all of these different people. My next question is, how are we going to get them into their four separate groups? Why don't we add to the motion, we take, appoint all of these 44 people and randomly set them into their groups?
Okay, and I hear you, I hear your concern, but at some point in time, we were going to have to put all these people on the committee. So let's go ahead and do, I think it'd be best, we go ahead and pass this motion. Then we will go back to doing the individual committees within the 2025 committee. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
Okay. Okay, let's get that.
All right, so then we'll have another motion here in a minute.
We'll do another one here in a minute. We'll do another item here in a minute. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you change your motion to just put, to appoint those that have submitted applications rather than listing into 44? Because I'm not sure there's 44 or 45.
Okay. Did you hear that?
There's 44 on this list.
We're just not, just to make sure that we don't have
Which I can't hear.
She's just suggesting that you modify the motion to use the current list, rather than cite a number.
Take the number out. Just take the number out. So modified?
Yep.
Okay. So modified, to those that have filled out the application. Had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, let's go back.
Mayor, if I can, follow up on that, is the, is there another application out there that we're unaware of?
No, sir.
We're not sure, but what she's saying is the number 44, she's not sure, maybe there's not a duplicate or something like that.
Just the list.
So it was just the number that she was hung up on. Isn't that correct?
Well, we're counting the list, and we're catching, we're getting 45 on this one.
Okay.
So we just want to make sure.
So they're getting 45 instead of 44, so it was just a number they were hung up on. They just want to make sure that everybody that had it, that found an application, was included in the committee. That way, that's everybody that wanted to participate. Okay. I don't think it's going, I don't, I guess I have a concern of us just saying, okay, now, let's just take those numbers, those people that are on the committee, that we've appointed to the committee, and we just randomly appoint them, because each of you have signaled, singled out certain people that you think would be good leaders of a committee. What if all of those people that you've named tonight get put on one committee, then who's going to be the leader for the other committees?
Could happen.
Well, somebody else.
My concern is that, is that what if we look at, at least, we could still let the committees choose their leaders, but maybe we at least put people's names that you want to, to certain committees. They wouldn't have to be the leader. You wouldn't have, then you could say the rest of people could be done randomly. In other words, let's say if you wanted to put John Doe on connectivity committee, he's on connectivity committee. And if you wanted to put Betty Brown on connectivity committee, then she's on connectivity committee. You get your people on which committee you think that you want, and then the rest of the people that you don't have names for could be assigned randomly, and then each committee could choose their own leader. Or if you want to go back, we will work on, we will sit here and dwell it out on who's going to be the leader of which committee. That's my two thought processes. Now, if somebody's got something better, let me hear it.
I don't know if they have anything better, but the other what if to play in this is, what if none of those folks want to be committee chairs, they just want to serve?
None of those what folks?
Any of the folks that we've named here.
That's what I'm saying, though. So all you're doing is putting them on a specific committee, connectivity committee. If they get on that committee and they decide they don't want a chair, they just want to be on the committee, then the committee itself will nominate their chairperson. Does that make sense?
Mayor, I think we're in at the same problem. Because now we've got 44 applications, applicants, or some number of applicants.
Right.
I counted them again, there's 44. But now we have to have 44, or some number, split into four.
You don't have to split them all.
It doesn't have to be exact.
No, no, I'm just saying, but we have to come up with 11 or some odd number for each committee.
Right.
So we got to do it somewhere between 40 and 50 times, and vote on it.
I got a question for staff. When do you anticipate having these committees up and running?
The scheduled meeting is October 15th, and we were hoping to do a briefing with at least the chairpeople, if you were to appoint those, a little earlier, just to kind of cover some of the ground rules with them.
Now, I didn't make myself clear. What I'm recommending is, the people that you have brought up tonight, that you thought would be good on a particular committee, go ahead and appoint those people to those, each one of you, make a motion, appoint those people to that particular committee. Then staff could take the remainder of the applicants and randomly assign them to committees. And now everyone that you had in mind to be a chairperson of a particular committee is at least on that committee, and then the committee itself would make the determination as to who is the chair of that committee.
Mayor, I think that's a great idea.
Mayor, what I have a problem with on that is, I don't understand what diversity means. And what does resource management mean? And what does connectivity mean? It's the same thing I talked about in the workshop. I have no clue what that means. To me, they're at random.
I'll let staff address that issue with you.
I'm going to let Donna address that issue. This was a debate that we had internally with the consultants.
You want to give it to Steve? You mean, Steve, you want to give it to Melinda? Then Melinda, you can give it to Carbo, and then we'll just pass this thing around.
When Karen was given the presentation last Monday, she talked about trying not to pigeonhole these discussions and these vision exercises into the typical categories of transportation and economic development and parks and things like that. So she was trying to broaden it, and maybe she's gone almost too far in broadening it, and that doesn't have as much meaning to you as it might otherwise. But she did go over what she felt like were some of the things that could be in those committee discussions. So with that as kind of a lead in, I think Donna can maybe walk you through a little bit more detail on what each of those things means. And in the meantime, I'll see what I can do to find last week's presentation.
These areas that the consultant has focused on, I just remind you, they come from all of the feedback that we've had throughout the process. And that feedback came via the surveys, and it came via participation at the various big idea workshops and meetings. And so that's really where the consultant drew these four topics or areas of focus. The first one would be connectivity. And connectivity could be very broad in scope, in that it could be how people connect via communication sources. That could be how the city uses its newsletter, its website, et cetera, to communicate to the public. It could also include the trail system, how people connect to various areas of town, how people connect to each other. So again, it's very broad in scope. Diversity is trying to assure that Louisville is a diverse community in many ways. That diversity can focus on housing, type of housing in our community, from, from single family to townhome and such, to the type of programs that we might offer in our recreation, to the type of arts programs we might offer through our centers. So again, diversity is not how you normally think of diversity, as far as ethnic diversity, but it's really broader in scope. Sustainability, or management, resource management, really gets into sustainability, how the city's going to look towards the use of resources from any, anywhere from, a major focus would certainly be water, and that could get into your codes, what the city requires in relation to landscaping in public areas, to how you manage your park system. And then finally, growth. And growth would be a focus on economic development, business growth, transportation, connectivity, to achieve that growth. So again, they're broad in concept, and the thought from the consultants was that each one of the committees may come up with ideas that are very similar, but in the end, those four committees will come together, and we'll take those ideas and put that together as one, one plan.
Okay. What, Councilman Durham, may we look at it, and maybe I'll try it a little different way? What if we take, everyone had names. Councilman Ferguson, you know, he had several names. What if each one of you make a motion, all right, no, let's don't do a motion yet, but each one of you will call out the names, I think they were all listed, and each one of you give your name, and if you think that person you'd like to see them on connectivity committee, just give that person's name, connectivity committee. If everybody's okay with that, they're on connectivity committee. Then we'll give a next name. If everybody's okay with that, on whatever committee, then okay. Then when it comes your time, if you're going to put somebody else on the connectivity committee, give that name and say connectivity committee. The only time we would have a differentiation is if we had John Doe, and one councilman wants him on connectivity committee, and the other councilman wants John Doe on the, I'm sorry, give me another committee. Diversity committee.
Aren't we on it that we've got to go through every 44?
No, we wouldn't have to. The names that you've gathered here, that you feel confident that you would want to be on a particular committee, then at least they would be on the committee, then it would be incumbent to the group, and then the staff would take the remaining people, which I'm, sounding to me like it's going to be about 25 of them. We've probably got 15 names here, something like that. So the probably the remaining 25 council, I mean, staff would randomly assign them to each one of those subcommittees, or I'm going to call them subcommittees, of the 2025 committee. That way, they would assign them to each one, to a subcommittee, and then each subcommittee would make the determination as to who they wanted to be leader of that committee.
Okay.
But at least your person that you felt would be a good person for that committee would be on that committee.
Okay, you're mentioning the ones that we've, we spoke about, and I'm assuming there were
There's about 15, I might tell you. 15, 20, something like that. We'll read them out here in a minute, but 15, 20 of them.
What of those? That's all we're going to do?
No, then after that, we can give, after we make that motion and assign them to a committee, then we can make a motion that staff take the remaining people on the 2025 committee that we've already appointed, to the 2025 committee, that staff randomly appoint the remaining people on the 2025 committee to a subcommittee, one of these four subcommittees. Let's start calling that subcommittees of the 2025 committee. I think maybe that will help clarify some of the confusion here.
We did have a motion and a second out there.
And we got that, for
Committee.
For the committee. We passed that. We have named everybody that filled out an application for the committee is now appointed to the 2025 committee. So now let's appoint the rest of them to the four subcommittees which have been created, and they are subcommittees of the 2025 committee. Because at one point, I do remember, at one point, they will all come together and give their ideas of each one of their subcommittees and discuss the overlay and the overlapping, and how they could work all that out. So I think it's good that we have one committee, and then we have four subcommittees that will eventually come together. Is that, am I off base here?
Sounds good to me.
Is everybody okay with that?
You think so.
Okay. Rudy, I'll start with you, sir. We started with you last time, if you'll just give your names that you have.
I'll just use the first one I read off, the first one that comes up here, Amanda Ferguson.
Okay, which committee would you like her to be on?
I have no clue. What's the first one?
Just do your random.
Diversity.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm, just to be sure you take this now, and we'll get it worked out here in a minute. Oh, all right. Your next one.
Mayor, I'm similar to Council
Oh, no, no, let's get off all his people that he wants on there.
I thought you said I was next.
No, I'm sorry. Your next people. Give us your people, Rudy, all your people that you would like to see on committee. Which committee you'd want.
The same four I did before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't even put them in a category.
You may have it, I don't know.
Charles Emery.
What committee would you like him to be on?
I have no, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Okay, just Charles Emery, okay?
Ronnie Cade and Sharon Ellis.
And Sharon Ellis. And you don't have a preference on which committee, but maybe have them on different committees?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we can do that. All right. Now, Councilman Tierney.
I am similar to Councilman Durham, and I don't have a preference. So my, I'm not going to categorize any of them. I'll stick with whatever everybody else thinks, and the rest will be random.
Can you give me your names again, please?
It doesn't matter, they're all going to be on a committee. But I will. Amanda Ferguson, John Paul Lewis, Charles Emery, and Ronnie Cade.
Yeah, that's one of the, we got that?
John Paul Lewis.
John Paul. I had better luck with my daughter's kindergarten class when I filled in for her. Gee, man, you're crazy. All right, Councilman Gilmore.
You ready to write?
I'm not writing, there, I got staff doing that for me.
All right, for diversity, Amanda Ferguson, Doug Hicks, Tamla Bowie, Frank Vaughn, Ronnie Cade. Yes, that's more than my first four picks.
Five people.
That's okay, that's okay, we're okay, we're okay.
I've talked to almost all of these folks.
We're okay.
I've spent a lot of time on this.
Let's just keep going. So is staff got that written there?
Are we good?
Okay, let's go.
Growth, Brent Daniels, Jim Davis.
Hey.
Hold on.
I thought he just did five.
Who? Growth.
Growth.
Brent Daniels, Jim Davis, Sharon Ellis, Ron Aljo, Raymond Daniels.
Total of four or five did you have?
I've got a list of people that I think would be great on every committee.
I know, but was that four or five?
That should be one, two, three, four, five.
There's five names on growth.
Daniels, Davis, Ellis, Aljo.
Daniels.
You had Daniels twice then.
Davis, Brent Daniels, Raymond Daniels. Two different Daniels.
Okay.
Got that, a Brent Daniels and a Raymond Daniels?
Yes.
Okay, we got it.
Resource management, Jennifer
Wait a minute, hold on. Resource management's the next subcommittee.
Jennifer Lynn, Steve Southwell, Jonathan Hightower, Bill Peck, Amy Wells.
How many names you got there?
That would be one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, we got five. Okay, next subcommittee.
Connectivity, Charles Emery.
Connectivity, connectivity. Okay, go ahead now.
Jim Mounts.
Charles Emery was first, right? Go ahead now, I'm sorry, after Charles Emery.
Jim Mounts, M-O-U-T-E-S, and Ms. Carol Longacre.
So that's three.
That's three.
Okay. And you define which committees you'd want. Okay, now, Councilman Ferguson, and no, we're not skipping you, it's your turn.
No, I don't want to be skipped. I just have to say, the problem I have at this point is that I did like the idea of randomly putting these people on groups. I have no problem identifying a core group of leaders and saying, let's don't put them all in one group, but to start assigning, I mean, we're at the point now, we're starting to assign a lot of people to a specific group, and I sort of like throwing them into a box and seeing what falls out. I think there's a benefit in that randomness, but, so at that point, all the names you have suit me, plus James Davis, John Larson, and Tamla Bowie.
Do you have, do you have a particular committee that you want them on?
Nope, nope, don't.
Okay, what are their names now?
James Davis.
Oh, so you don't have them as a, on a particular committee, recommendation for any particular committee?
No.
Go ahead and take their names.
My concern is to find the names of people who are, we identify as leaders and make sure they aren't all put in one group. That's probably my number one concern.
I understand, so let's, give us your additional names.
James Davis, John Larson, Tamla Bowie.
Go slow.
Sorry.
James Davis, John Larson.
John Larson, Tamla Bowie.
And Tamla Bowie.
Because those names haven't been brought up yet, if I mark them off.
We don't have a committee for them yet, but we'll make sure that those three get put on different committees here in just a minute, okay? We wrap this up.
Well, they could all be on one committee, just throw this all in a basket.
I thought you said you didn't want them on the same committee.
I don't want all the leaders on one committee. I agree with all the names I've heard so far, they are leaders, and I just added three more to the leader list. And I would not want to see all 12 or 15 put on one committee.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, after listening to the discussion, I too am going to submit my, my choices, and I have no direct committee that they should be a chairperson of. These are just four individuals out of the ones that I talked to that I think would do a good job.
So in other words, these are four people, if I understand you correctly, these are four people that you think would be good chairpeople, so you would not like to see them, you would like to see them put on separate committees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. Give me those four names, please.
Uh, Steve Southwell, Ronnie Cade, Ron Aljo, and Sharon Ellis.
Okay, now I'm going to get each staff to give me a consensus of the names that we have that would not, that would get each person's recommendation with a person, as you can hear, Councilman Vaughn just wants to make sure that those four people on different committees, so assign each one of them to a committee, but different committees. Councilman Durham was the same way. He had four people, he didn't care which committee, he just wanted them assigned to a different committee. Then Councilman Tierney was the same way. He had four people, and he didn't care which committee, he wanted them on different committees. Have I stated everything correctly so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so staff will do that, make sure that those people get assigned different committees. Councilman Gilmore gave us direction as to which people he would like on which committee, so if you'd make sure that happens.
If there's a conflict, I'm willing to step up.
And I understand that, I don't think there's going to be a conflict from, I may have this wrong, but I think we're going to be okay. And then Council Ferguson, you got something else you want to add?
Uh, I'll just make sure I'm clear, I added three names to the host of, the list of who I think overall the leaders are, there's probably a dozen or fifteen.
Technically, you only added one. I got two of the three.
Then I added one. So it's a pool, for me, it's a pool of, of the names we've heard, and then if I added one, then I added one or three, or I don't care.
All right, so...
I like the pool.
Can you look at that and get all of those people on separate committees except for ones that Council Gilmore wanted on specific committees?
I don't know if that'll work, because I've got a couple of names that have been listed that I had on the same committee, so I, I'm willing to step away from that if need be on conflicts like that. There was a require, there's a requirement that Mr. Fer, or Mr., Councilman Vaughn said he wanted his four on four separate committees. Well, I had two of them on one, so that's where the conflict comes in.
Okay, I see.
So I'm, I'm...
Initially, but then later on, he said you could assign them anywhere.
Which, which one is it that you're, which one is, is to do, you said there's one?
Um, I think it was, um...
Or which two? You've got two that are on the same.
Caden Ferguson, I think, on the same committee?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I've got Caden, Ronnie Cade and Amanda Ferguson on the same committee.
And you don't, and, and so...
And I'm okay with, if you want to split them up, or, I'm, I'm okay with splitting up any of those if need be.
Okay, let's split up Ronnie Cade and Amanda Ferguson, put one of them on the committee you suggested, and put the other one on another committee. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
I need to catch up. My understanding was that TJ was the only one who actually expressed a preference for putting somebody on a specific committee.
Correct.
Correct.
So everyone else's assignments, they've selected names, but since we're going to be randomly assigning them to committees, they're no different than anybody else.
Yes, they are. They, we don't want those people on the same committee.
Okay, you just want to split them up?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's the difference.
You're worse than the kindergarten. So have you got it listed out there? You've got it subcommitted out for me?
No, I don't have it subcommitted out, but we can tell it was split down.
I have several that are on multiple.
Yeah, there's going to be several conflicts.
There's going to be several. Ellis, Aljo.
Yep.
Okay, so how about we do this?
If Ellis is out, Aljo's out.
Okay, how about, do you have to have this tonight?
Caden's out. Well, we can work on it and bring it back in the form of a list maybe at the next meeting. I think that would probably be the best thing at this stage.
That's what I was wondering, and see if anybody has any objection or wants to move somebody around. Now, is that going to hurt if we...
No, no, we'll just address the schedule.
Is everybody okay with that? I think staff has your people's names down, and if you want them on a specific committee, they're on there, and then if you didn't, at least your four people shouldn't be on the same committee. Does that make sense to everybody? And everybody's okay with that?
Sort of. What I'll start with is TJ's list, right? Because I'm trying to figure out how to deal with conflicts.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah, because he has specific committees, and then the other people, just make sure if they're on TJ's list, that's fine, because as long as they're on separate committees. And from what TJ said, the only ones he heard that he had two people on the same committee from everybody else's recommendation was only those two people, and he said he could split those two people up.
That was just the one that I remembered, Mayor. The old, the old timers is getting to me.
So there's going to be people, some of these people are going to be on the same committee, just the way, because there's only four committees to sign.
That's true, that, that could happen, right. But not all the same.
For example, if I started with the Growth Committee that TJ suggested, I've got Aljo and Ellis on there, so that's two of the names that were on...
And I understand what you're saying, but I think you can do it, and we're going to give you two weeks to figure this out, so hopefully you'll be able to do it in two weeks.
I do too.
Rudy's four people, you'll put them on a committee, but each one will be a separate committee. Councilman Tierney's four people will be on separate committees.
Well, there's overlap, those, those names.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, those people will be on separate committees. You don't want them on the same, I think you can adjust that. I'm getting nods from the rest of the county staff that you can do this, that then Councilman Vaughn's four people, they'll all be on separate committees.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
And then if there's a, if there is a problem, you get us that list.
Show you where it is.
And what I would like for you to do is to get us that list by, uh...
We'll get it to you tomorrow.
Well, let, let's say at least by next week, first part of next week. Our council meeting's not till October, what, second, third?
No, seventh.
Seventh.
Is that going to throw us too far behind?
Well, there's not much of an alternative, I don't think.
The only alternative is to just go back to the randomly appoint.
Do what I do, put a pool out there and make sure they aren't all on one committee.
That's... Well, at a random assignment, chances of that happening are probably pretty slim.
Yeah, we've identified more than just four to eight, so I think we'd be fine.
We've probably identified twelve to fifteen.
Yeah.
So right there, you're going to have four, or at least three possibly on the same committee.
Counselor, is there any way that we can, we've given staff this direction, is there any way that staff could get this in a memorandum to council and without conducting a, could, is there any direction we can give to, to staff to put down what we think we've recommended, put it down, and if no one objects, it's approved? Can you do that?
What if it was a motion that said something to the effect of council will do their best to approve within the parameters and be done with it?
Didn't that still take us out to the seventh of?
Does it?
Right. Well, that's the next meeting then, isn't it?
Yeah.
Whatever y'all were talking, I can, another thing I've have, I can't hear everything.
Agree on four chairs, just four chairs.
I'll bring that up for you. You're right, go ahead.
Four names, four names, four names.
God bless you, folks. Okay, what we're going to do is, we're going to, we're going to hold this item right now, and we're going to, we're going to go ahead and go in, this was the last item, we're not going to act on this item right now, we're going to go ahead and go through reports, we're going to go to closed session, and while we're in closed session, staff is going to be compiling this list for us. When we come back out of closed session, then we will act on item number fourteen, what, fifteen? Item fifteen. Can I do that, Counselor? Isn't that what's your suggestion?
I was actually suggesting I handle these right now.
Why, why couldn't we just go in, go into closed session?
He's saying, why not go do this?
Yes, you can go in and do closed session. And we went back, and then come back out.
They could be working on it while we're... They could be working on it while we're in executive session.
We go in, go into closed session. It's a regular, yeah.
So just leave it open?
Yeah. Okay. All right, we're okay. So we're going to leave this item open, staff is going to try to prepare this list for us with the direction we've given you while we're in closed session, and then, that way the rest of the staff can go home. And then we'll come back out and finalize item fifteen. Is that good with everybody? Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We're going to do reports?
Yes, now we're going to go to reports, and we're going to keep them short. Except for staff. If you've got something important, please tell us about it. Nika. Don't go there, don't even go there. Bob?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
You got a big event coming up, right? I'm sorry, I'm going to tout that I did last week, was it October 2nd or?
Fifth.
Fifth, I'm sorry. I don't want to think in the second, your open house, hope everybody can attend. Linda? Chief Carbo?
No, sir.
Carol? Thank you, ma'am. Donna? Brenda? Ms. Ferris?
No, sir.
Ms. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Folks, if you get a chance, there is a wonderful new event at Western Days, it's called the Stone Cutter Shuffle, it's done by our local Masonic Lodge, and they've gone and moved their 5K to the beginning of Saturday morning. So if you are interested in walking, jogging, or watching me pant and breathe across the finish line, please come out, just Google Stone Cutter Shuffle and sign up, it's a great event, charity, and all that other good stuff. And then you can just step right into Western Days. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Under duress, I'll greatly abbreviate my usual report. Got the Honky Tonk Review on September 21st, two shows, Louisville Lake Symphony Friday night, 7:30, thirtieth season kickoff. Western Days, we've got a lot of events, Don Edwards, The Cowboy Validear Friday night, the movie The Cowboys starring John Wayne Friday night, Western Day Roundup presented by the Girl Scouts of Northeast Texas Saturday, and the Cowboy Culture Exhibit of Old West Artifacts that'll be in the Art Museum, plus Cowboy Up, which is original works by the Visual Arts League, that'll be in the hallways. And of course, there's always acoustic Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn, certainly good to have you back, sir, I'm glad you're feeling better. Do you have anything?
Thank you very much, Mayor. No, sir, I have nothing.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, we appreciate you being here, we apologize for the deal back there, but we appreciate your patience, and we thank you for what you do each and every day. First thing I'm just going to say is, I know Councilman Durham has been having difficulties, and this is for Mr. King, he's having difficulties hearing.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Tierney is having difficult hearing.
Speaker system?
Hearing staff's comments and other people's comments. We need to get this fixed.
Yeah.
It needs to be done ASAP. We've been on about two months now, and we need to get it fixed.
Enough volume.
So I don't know what it is, I could hear some of those people out there, some I couldn't, but it, we need to get it worked. If there's anybody in, in, I don't know, could the people in the audience, there's hardly anybody left now.
Probably she can't hear anything up here, because I was telling TJ earlier in the meeting when, uh, the Beer Fest folks were here, that I couldn't hear her, I couldn't hear our consultant, we're just not getting any amplification up here at all.
I think these, these speakers...
I can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear me right now. These speakers up here are not apparently doing anything.
I, I can't hear anything coming out of that speaker.
Anyhow.
So we need to get this fixed.
This is like Dakota Silence.
Better go back, or go back to the old system, because it's, nobody's knowing what's going on half the time up here. I think that was part of the confusion tonight, people didn't know what the other person was saying. Okay, with that, and, oh, please, do remember, Western Week begins a week from Friday, October the twenty-seventh, I'm, excuse me, September 27th and 28th, and we hope everybody will come out, enjoy it, and have a good time. In accordance with Texas Governor Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, will now convene into executive session.
That's all we need, nobody was going to give you four. That's a mess.
That's a nothing.
To what? To the mayor. Oh, is that yours? Actually.
You don't should make Randy Fourns have to dress them go home, huh?
I don't need to read it all again, do I, Judy? Or Liz? I didn't bring my gin hand.
Oh, yeah. Shouldn't have to.
Liz, do I need to read the caption and everything again, or?
Is that a chair height?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who messes with these chairs, but they're having a good time.
Okay, here we go.
I think you have the only copy, sir.
Huh?
I think you have the only copy. You have my copy, too.
There you go.
I gave it to her.
We'll convene back into regular session, Council. First thing, first thing we're going to do is, we're going to go back and, we're going to address item fifteen. Item fifteen, based on the conversation we had before, earlier in the regular session, here's someone to give you the names, what we've kind of come up with of, of having specifically appoint the following individuals to the specific subcommittees, thank you for using sub, I like that much, subcommittees as listed. Diversity Subcommittee will be Amanda Ferguson, Doug Hicks, Tamla Bowie, Frank Vaughn. Growth Committee would be Brent Daniels, Jim Davis, Sharon Ellis, Raymond Daniels, John Paul Lewis. Resource Management would be Jennifer Lindy, Steve Southwell, Jonathan Hightower, Bill Peck, Amy Wells, Ronnie Cade. Connectivity would be Charles Emery, Jim Montez, Carol Longacre, Ron Aljo, and John Larson. Now, these people don't have to be residents, is that correct?
J.P. Lewis.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, where's J.P. Lewis? John, John.[1632.62]
I thought they weren't supposed to be on the same committee. They're not. I didn't put anybody on the same committee. Everybody that you named is on a different committee. The four people you gave us is on a different committee. You remember the four people you gave me?
Mm-hmm.
Which ones are they?
Uh, Southwell.
Okay, he's on, he's on Resource Management.
Oh, Aljo.
Aljo is on, uh, Connectivity.
Ellis.
Ellis.
And Cade.
Sharon Ellis is on Growth, and Cade is on Diversity. No, wait. Where'd I see Cade? Oh, so she is, no, she's no deal.
We do have one, that there's gonna be somebody that's gonna magic on two, there was no way to get around it.
You're right, Steve South-
Southwell.
Steve Southwell and Ronnie Cade ended up on the same committee.
That was the one that I heard.
That's the only one, you're right, Steve.
That's the one I heard, yeah.
Okay, so that are the only ones that were on the same committee. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Louis on them, J.P. Lewis?
John Paul Lewis is on the Growth Committee.
Alright, okay.
You want me to read them? I'm gonna read them to you again. Diversity Committee was Amanda Ferguson, Doug Hicks, Tamla Bowie, and Frank Vaughn. Growth was Brent Daniels, Jim Davis, Jim Darren Ellis, Raymond Daniels, and John Paul Lewis. Resource Management was Jennifer Lindy, Steve Southwell, Jonathan Hightower, Bill Peck, Amy Wells, and Ronnie Cade. Connectivity is Charles Emery, John Montez, Carol Longacre, Ron Aljo, and Joe Larson.
John.
John Larson, I'm sorry. Now, I will ask one question, the Councilman Vaughn's question, could you not put either Southwell or Cade on Diversity instead of?
The problem was is that conflicted with another council member, that conflicted with two council members, so we went with the one that only conflicted with one time.
Two instead, one instead of two.
Conflicts if we had moved anybody else around instead of just one.
Thank you very much. So is that okay?
Absolutely.
Is everybody okay with that? Is everybody content, happy? Who wants to make this motion?
Motion to approve is read.
The second motion would be for the committees to-
Right, wait a minute, wait a minute, one, please. Yeah, I read the motion earlier.
Read the motion before you announced it.
So you're okay?
Yeah.
So we have a motion to-
Approve is read.
Approve is read.
Second.
By Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Vaughn. Any more discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, would someone like to make a motion that we appoint, randomly appoint the remaining 2025 committee members to these four subcommittees?
So moved.
Second.
No, we just appointed, well, we'll do it again just in case.
That's true.
Okay, alright.
That is true.
If you got it, then I'm okay.
One last thing?
What? That's not forty-four. Now, she said that we said earlier, she says we have a motion, we could do it again just to make sure. The motion to, basically, we've already done a motion that everybody else that filled out an application to be on the 2025 committee, everybody that I did not read these names here, the rest of those people that filled out an application for the 2025 committee would be randomly appointed to one of these four subcommittees. Okay. So who's gonna randomly appoint? Staff?
Staff.
Staff.
Okay. No, you staff.
Some dice.
Now, what?
Community Chairperson is who will let the committees-
Okay, I thought we had said that earlier, but maybe we need to make a motion this, uh, that we make a motion to allow each subcommittee elect their own chairperson.
So moved.
We have a motion, so moved, by Councilman Durham, the second by Councilman, I'm sorry, Tierney, I'm, Gilmore, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you and said Tierney.
Okay, it's ten twenty.
Councilman Gilmore, any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we just, we just made a motion and voted to let each subcommittee appoint their own chairperson.
Correct.
Correct.
I know the sound, you can't hear, I apologize. I, I guess what we're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to look directly forward and speak into your microphone and hope that people can hear-
I don't think it made any difference.
I, I don't know.
Because, I mean, I'm just talking almost full blast right now.
I can't even hardly hear you.
I, I, yeah, I can hear something.
Testing, testing, I'm shouting, literally.
Hello, testing, one, two, three.
Whatever, y'all can get people in here and figure it out. Okay, so staff has what they need for item fifteen, correct? We're good to go. Is there any other items to be considered, Counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, the second by Councilman Gilmore. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm gonna give you this back. Paul said it's the only copy, I said I'm gonna eat it.
I haven't saved.
I figured you did.